...multi-step protocol that includes daily disinfection of touchpoints such as drinking fountains, handrails, door handles, sinks, toilets, partition walls and locks. Schools will also include daily cleaning of student desks and chairs, bathroom floors, and computer mice and keyboards. If there is a concern of possible contamination, buildings will be electrostatically sprayed using a powerful hypochlorous acid that carries an EPA kill claim for COVID-19 and other viruses. Take that coronavirus. Lunchroom tables will be disinfected by lunchroom monitors, custodians, and nutrition staff in between each lunch group. High-touch points on school buses, such as the backs of seats and handrails, will be wiped down and sprayed with disinfectant after each riding group. Bathrooms will be cleaned while school is in session. You may assign seats for students and ask them to sanitize their space. They can also help by cleaning any shared hard surfaces such as desks, computers, or other equipment when entering and exiting the room. Here is a short video on how to properly clean student desks and touchpoints.
Hi, we're here today to show you the correct way that we are going to spray down these desks in between each class session with your students. Product we are going to be using is called a Bet Col, it's pH 7Q, it is a quantenary neutral disinfectant, it is a hospital-grade disinfectant that has been proven to kill the COVID virus. Your head custodian will provide you this chemical, so if you need some, just talk to them. When you first start, you're gonna wanna make sure you just have a really fine mist. All we wanna do is get the desks damp, we don't wanna saturate them, we wanna make sure they'll be dry by the time your next class comes in. So, once you get a fine mist, all you wanna do is just about two or three pumps over them, making sure you hit the desktops and also the backs of the chairs, which are the touchpoints. All you have to do is basically, you can just walk backwards and forwards and zigzag. Okay, if after five minutes your desks aren't dry, or by the time your students come in, just go ahead and grab a paper towel and wipe off any residual chemical that's still on there.
As you can see, keeping high-touch surfaces sanitary is a top priority for us. Lockers will not be used in secondary schools to prevent congregation of students. Students will be allowed to bring backpacks to class in order to keep their belongings separated from others. Davis School District Utilities and HVAC departments will implement guidelines to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19, which includes increasing outside airflow throughout buildings, moving to higher efficiency filtration level in HVAC equipment, and running HVAC equipment two hours before and after building occupancy. Rest assured, the district is doing everything possible to keep everyone as safe and healthy as possible.
Hi, my name is Simone. Today, we're gonna be talking about hygiene etiquette. You will play a vital role in monitoring student handwashing and sanitization. Please ensure elementary students sanitize their hands every time they enter and exit the classroom, and wash their hands before and after recess and lunch. Staff in secondary schools, please encourage students to sanitize their hands each time they enter and exit a classroom. When instructing students on hand sanitizer use, have them cover all surfaces of their hands with sanitizer and rub them together until their hands feel dry. For proper handwashing techniques, here is a video to show you how it's done.
First, wet your hands using running water, warm or cold, whatever temperature feels best to you. Then put soap on your hands. Scrub your hands together for twenty seconds, which is long enough to sing the Happy Birthday song twice. Make sure to get in between your fingers, the backs of your hands, your wrists, and under your fingernails where the germs tend to hide most. Rinse your hands off. Then dry your hands with a paper towel, hand dryer, or air dry them.
Each school will have freestanding hand sanitizing stations positioned throughout the school in high-traffic areas, including the main office, library, counseling center, cafeteria, and gym. Remind students to avoid touching their eyes, nose, and mouth as much as possible, and to cover their coughs and sneezes with a tissue. Once they've used the tissue, have them throw it in the trash and wash their hands immediately with soap and water for at least twenty seconds. If a tissue is unavailable, they can use their elbow to cover a cough or sneeze. There will also be no handshakes, high-fives, or hugs. However, air high-fives, air elbow bumps, or a simple wave can be used in place of physical contact. If we can all remember these simple tips, we can help keep everyone as safe and as healthy as possible. Hi, my name is Simone, and today we're gonna be talking about face coverings. According to the CDC, the COVID-19 virus spreads mainly among people who are in close contact with one another, usually within about six feet. So, the use of cloth face coverings is important in settings where people are close to each other, or where physical distancing is difficult to maintain. Governor Gary Herbert has issued a mandate that all students and staff will wear face coverings at school. Face coverings will also be required by anyone riding a school bus to and from school. Visitors and volunteers also will need to wear a face covering upon entry into the school building. We wanna make sure everyone is wearing their face coverings correctly, so Nurse Alicia Fawson is going to show us how to properly put on a mask.
Each employee and student will receive a lanyard and a mask. I will demonstrate how to put on the mask, and then how to take it off and attach it to the lanyard. Please, before putting on your mask and after taking off your mask, make sure to wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. To put on the mask, take the ear loop, put it around your ear, and on the other side, and then adjust the mask using the bottom and top portions of the mask. And then to remove the mask, take the mask by the ear loop, like this, pull it together so that the side facing your face is on the inside, so that your germs are contained on the inside. Clip it to your lanyard, and then wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. As an employee, you may be given a face shield. The maximum amount of protection that we can offer you is wearing the face shield and the mask. However, if you choose to only wear the face shield, you do increase your risk of having to be quarantined if you are exposed to a person with COVID-19.
We hope this information was helpful and that you have a great school year. Hi, my name is Simone. Today, we're gonna be talking about hygiene etiquette. You will play a vital role in monitoring student handwashing and sanitization. Please ensure elementary students sanitize their hands every time they enter and exit the classroom, and wash their hands before and after recess and lunch. Staff in secondary schools, please encourage students to sanitize their hands each time they enter and exit a classroom. When instructing students on hand sanitizer use, have them cover all surfaces of their hands with sanitizer and rub them together until their hands feel dry. For proper handwashing techniques, here is a video to show you how it's done.
First, wet your hands using running water, warm or cold, whatever temperature feels best to you. Then put soap on your hands. Scrub your hands together for twenty seconds, which is long enough to sing the Happy Birthday song twice. Make sure to get in between your fingers, the backs of your hands, your wrists, and under your fingernails where the germs tend to hide most. Rinse your hands off. Then dry your hands with a paper towel, hand dryer, or air dry them.
Each school will have freestanding hand sanitizing stations positioned throughout the school in high-traffic areas, including the main office, library, counseling center, cafeteria, and gym. Remind students to avoid touching their eyes, nose, and mouth as much as possible, and to cover their coughs and sneezes with a tissue. Once they've used the tissue, have them throw it in the trash and wash their hands immediately with soap and water for at least twenty seconds. If a tissue is unavailable, they can use their elbow to cover a cough or sneeze. There will also be no handshakes, high-fives, or hugs. However, air high-fives, air elbow bumps, or a simple wave can be used in place of physical contact. If we can all remember these simple tips, we can help keep everyone as safe and as healthy as possible.
Hi, I'm Brad. I wanna talk to you for a moment about staying home when sick. Don't hesitate to stay home if you feel sick. You should stay home if you have any of the following COVID-19 symptoms: shortness of breath, sore throat or persistent cough, temperature higher than 100.4 degrees, congestion or runny nose, vomiting or diarrhea, or new loss of taste or smell. You should also stay home if you experience other illness symptoms such as severe or long-lasting abdominal pain, rash with fever or strep throat. Also, if you recently had close contact with a person with COVID-19, you should also stay home. If you consider yourself high-risk, you can complete a form with health information that will be shared with the health department to facilitate contact tracing. You can also work with your immediate supervisor if there is a concern about risk. I hope you have a successful and happy start to your school year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Simone. Today, we're gonna be talking about hygiene etiquette. You will play a vital role in monitoring student handwashing and sanitization. Please ensure elementary students sanitize their hands every time they enter and exit the classroom, and wash their hands before and after recess and lunch. Staff in secondary schools, please encourage students to sanitize their hands each time they enter and exit a classroom. When instructing students on hand sanitizer use, have them cover all surfaces of their hands with sanitizer and rub them together until their hands feel dry. For proper handwashing techniques, here is a video to show you how it's done.
First, wet your hands using running water, warm or cold, whatever temperature feels best to you. Then put soap on your hands. Scrub your hands together for twenty seconds, which is long enough to sing the Happy Birthday song twice. Make sure to get in between your fingers, the backs of your hands, your wrists, and under your fingernails where the germs tend to hide most. Rinse your hands off. Then dry your hands with a paper towel, hand dryer, or air dry them.
Each school will have freestanding hand sanitizing stations positioned throughout the school in high-traffic areas, including the main office, library, counseling center, cafeteria, and gym. Remind students to avoid touching their eyes, nose, and mouth as much as possible, and to cover their coughs and sneezes with a tissue. Once they've used the tissue, have them throw it in the trash and wash their hands immediately with soap and water for at least twenty seconds. If a tissue is unavailable, they can use their elbow to cover a cough or sneeze. There will also be no handshakes, high-fives, or hugs. However, air high-fives, air elbow bumps, or a simple wave can be used in place of physical contact. If we can all remember these simple tips, we can help keep everyone as safe and as healthy as possible.
Hi, I'm Brad. I wanna talk to you for a moment about staying home when sick. Don't hesitate to stay home if you feel sick. You should stay home if you have any of the following COVID-19 symptoms: shortness of breath, sore throat or persistent cough, temperature higher than 100.4 degrees, congestion or runny nose, vomiting or diarrhea, or new loss of taste or smell. You should also stay home if you experience other illness symptoms such as severe or long-lasting abdominal pain, rash with fever or strep throat. Also, if you recently had close contact with a person with COVID-19, you should also stay home. If you consider yourself high-risk, you can complete a form with health information that will be shared with the health department to facilitate contact tracing. You can also work with your immediate supervisor if there is a concern about risk. I hope you have a successful and happy start to your school year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan, and today we're gonna talk about cleaning and disinfecting. When you and students come to school, rest assured we are doing everything possible to keep the building clean so everyone can be safe. The district has implemented a multi-step protocol that includes daily disinfection of touchpoints such as drinking fountains, handrails, door handles, sinks, toilets, partition walls, and locks. Schools will also include daily cleaning of student desks and chairs, bathroom floors, and computer mice and keyboards. If there is a concern of possible contamination, buildings will be electrostatically sprayed using a powerful hypochlorous acid that carries an EPA kill claim for COVID-19 and other viruses. Take that coronavirus. Lunchroom tables will be disinfected by lunchroom monitors, custodians, and nutrition staff in between each lunch group. High-touch points on school buses, such as the backs of seats and handrails, will be wiped down and sprayed with disinfectant after each riding group. Bathrooms will be cleaned while school is in session. You may assign seats for students and ask them to sanitize their space. They can also help by cleaning any shared hard surfaces such as desks, computers, or other equipment when entering and exiting the room. Here is a short video on how to properly clean student desks and touchpoints.
Hi, we're here today to show you the correct way that we are going to spray down these desks in between each class session with your students. Product we are going to be using is called a Bet Col, it's pH 7Q, it is a quantenary neutral disinfectant, it is a hospital-grade disinfectant that has been proven to kill the COVID virus. Your head custodian will provide you this chemical, so if you need some, just talk to them. When you first start, you're gonna wanna make sure you just have a really fine mist. All we wanna do is get the desks damp, we don't wanna saturate them, we wanna make sure they'll be dry by the time your next class comes in. So, once you get a fine mist, all you wanna do is just about two or three pumps over them, making sure you hit the desktops and also the backs of the chairs, which are the touchpoints. All you have to do is basically, you can just walk backwards and forwards and zigzag. Okay, if after five minutes your desks aren't dry, or by the time your students come in, just go ahead and grab a paper towel and wipe off any residual chemical that's still on there.
As you can see, keeping high-touch surfaces sanitary is a top priority for us. Lockers will not be used in secondary schools to prevent congregation of students. Students will be allowed to bring backpacks to class in order to keep their belongings separated from others. Davis School District Utilities and HVAC departments will implement guidelines to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19, which includes increasing outside airflow throughout buildings, moving to higher efficiency filtration level in HVAC equipment, and running HVAC equipment two hours before and after building occupancy. Rest assured, the district is doing everything possible to keep everyone as safe and healthy as possible.
Hi, I'm Brad. I wanna talk to you for a moment about staying home when sick. Don't hesitate to stay home if you feel sick. You should stay home if you have any of the following COVID-19 symptoms: shortness of breath, sore throat or persistent cough, temperature higher than 100.4 degrees, congestion or runny nose, vomiting or diarrhea, or new loss of taste or smell. You should also stay home if you experience other illness symptoms such as severe or long-lasting abdominal pain, rash with fever or strep throat. Also, if you recently had close contact with a person with COVID-19, you should also stay home. If you consider yourself high-risk, you can complete a form with health information that will be shared with the health department to facilitate contact tracing. You can also work with your immediate supervisor if there is a concern about risk. I hope you have a successful and happy start to your school year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Simone. Today, we're gonna be talking about hygiene etiquette. You will play a vital role in monitoring student handwashing and sanitization. Please ensure elementary students sanitize their hands every time they enter and exit the classroom, and wash their hands before and after recess and lunch. Staff in secondary schools, please encourage students to sanitize their hands each time they enter and exit a classroom. When instructing students on hand sanitizer use, have them cover all surfaces of their hands with sanitizer and rub them together until their hands feel dry. For proper handwashing techniques, here is a video to show you how it's done.
First, wet your hands using running water, warm or cold, whatever temperature feels best to you. Then put soap on your hands. Scrub your hands together for twenty seconds, which is long enough to sing the Happy Birthday song twice. Make sure to get in between your fingers, the backs of your hands, your wrists, and under your fingernails where the germs tend to hide most. Rinse your hands off. Then dry your hands with a paper towel, hand dryer, or air dry them.
Each school will have freestanding hand sanitizing stations positioned throughout the school in high-traffic areas, including the main office, library, counseling center, cafeteria, and gym. Remind students to avoid touching their eyes, nose, and mouth as much as possible, and to cover their coughs and sneezes with a tissue. Once they've used the tissue, have them throw it in the trash and wash their hands immediately with soap and water for at least twenty seconds. If a tissue is unavailable, they can use their elbow to cover a cough or sneeze. There will also be no handshakes, high-fives, or hugs. However, air high-fives, air elbow bumps, or a simple wave can be used in place of physical contact. If we can all remember these simple tips, we can help keep everyone as safe and as healthy as possible.
Hi, I'm Dan, and today we're gonna talk about physical distancing, one of my favorite topics. One of the best ways to curb the spread of COVID-19 is by doing our best to physically distance from one another. The rule of thumb is to maintain six feet of distance between yourself and anyone else. Physical distancing is challenging in a school where classroom walls cannot be moved, which is why all staff and students will be wearing face coverings in order to comply with the mandate issued by Governor Gary Herbert. When a teacher is in front of the room during class and can maintain six feet of distance between himself or herself and the students, the teacher will not have to wear a face covering. Show those pearly whites. If the teacher moves closer than six feet, such as for one-to-one instruction, they will be required to wear a face covering. At lunchtime, students will be distanced as much as possible. In elementary schools, lunch will be scheduled by grade level with tables sanitized between each seating. In secondary schools, tables will be spaced apart as much as possible. Students will need to follow directional signage while walking in hallways. There will also be no group gatherings during the school day unless physical distancing can be maintained. While school may be a little different, we are all in this together so we can be safe and healthy.
Hi, my name is Simone. Today, we're gonna be talking about hygiene etiquette. You will play a vital role in monitoring student handwashing and sanitization. Please ensure elementary students sanitize their hands every time they enter and exit the classroom, and wash their hands before and after recess and lunch. Staff in secondary schools, please encourage students to sanitize their hands each time they enter and exit a classroom. When instructing students on hand sanitizer use, have them cover all surfaces of their hands with sanitizer and rub them together until their hands feel dry. For proper handwashing techniques, here is a video to show you how it's done.
First, wet your hands using running water, warm or cold, whatever temperature feels best to you. Then put soap on your hands. Scrub your hands together for twenty seconds, which is long enough to sing the Happy Birthday song twice. Make sure to get in between your fingers, the backs of your hands, your wrists, and under your fingernails where the germs tend to hide most. Rinse your hands off. Then dry your hands with a paper towel, hand dryer, or air dry them.
Each school will have freestanding hand sanitizing stations positioned throughout the school in high-traffic areas, including the main office, library, counseling center, cafeteria, and gym. Remind students to avoid touching their eyes, nose, and mouth as much as possible, and to cover their coughs and sneezes with a tissue. Once they've used the tissue, have them throw it in the trash and wash their hands immediately with soap and water for at least twenty seconds. If a tissue is unavailable, they can use their elbow to cover a cough or sneeze. There will also be no handshakes, high-fives, or hugs. However, air high-fives, air elbow bumps, or a simple wave can be used in place of physical contact. If we can all remember these simple tips, we can help keep everyone as safe and as healthy as possible. Hi, my name is Simone, and today we're gonna be talking about face coverings. According to the CDC, the COVID-19 virus spreads mainly among people who are in close contact with one another, usually within about six feet. So, the use of cloth face coverings is important in settings where people are close to each other, or where physical distancing is difficult to maintain. Governor Gary Herbert has issued a mandate that all students and staff will wear face coverings at school. Face coverings will also be required by anyone riding a school bus to and from school. Visitors and volunteers also will need to wear a face covering upon entry into the school building. We wanna make sure everyone is wearing their face coverings correctly, so Nurse Alicia Fawson is going to show us how to properly put on a mask.
Each employee and student will receive a lanyard and a mask. I will demonstrate how to put on the mask, and then how to take it off and attach it to the lanyard. Please, before putting on your mask and after taking off your mask, make sure to wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. To put on the mask, take the ear loop, put it around your ear, and on the other side, and then adjust the mask using the bottom and top portions of the mask. And then to remove the mask, take the mask by the ear loop, like this, pull it together so that the side facing your face is on the inside, so that your germs are contained on the inside. Clip it to your lanyard, and then wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. As an employee, you may be given a face shield. The maximum amount of protection that we can offer you is wearing the face shield and the mask. However, if you choose to only wear the face shield, you do increase your risk of having to be quarantined if you are exposed to a person with COVID-19.
We hope this information was helpful and that you have a great school year.
Hi, I'm Dan, and today we're gonna talk about physical distancing, one of my favorite topics. One of the best ways to curb the spread of COVID-19 is by doing our best to physically distance from one another. The rule of thumb is to maintain six feet of distance between yourself and anyone else. Physical distancing is challenging in a school where classroom walls cannot be moved, which is why all staff and students will be wearing face coverings in order to comply with the mandate issued by Governor Gary Herbert. When a teacher is in front of the room during class and can maintain six feet of distance between himself or herself and the students, the teacher will not have to wear a face covering. Show those pearly whites. If the teacher moves closer than six feet, such as for one-to-one instruction, they will be required to wear a face covering. At lunchtime, students will be distanced as much as possible. In elementary schools, lunch will be scheduled by grade level with tables sanitized between each seating. In secondary schools, tables will be spaced apart as much as possible. Students will need to follow directional signage while walking in hallways. There will also be no group gatherings during the school day unless physical distancing can be maintained. While school may be a little different, we are all in this together so we can be safe and healthy.
Hi, my name is Simone. Today we're going to be talking about hygiene etiquette. You will play a vital role in monitoring student hand washing and sanitization. Please ensure elementary students sanitize their hands every time they enter and exit the classroom and wash their hands before and after recess and lunch. Staff in secondary schools, please encourage students to sanitize their hands each time they enter and exit a classroom. When instructing students on hand sanitizer use, have them cover all surfaces of their hands with sanitizer and rub them together until their hands feel dry. For proper hand washing techniques, here is a video to show you how it's done.
First, wet your hands using running water, warm or cold, whatever temperature feels best to you. Then put soap on your hands. Scrub your hands together for 20 seconds, which is long enough to sing the Happy Birthday song twice. Make sure to get in between your fingers, the backs of your hands, your wrists, and under your fingernails where the germs tend to hide most. Rinse your hands off. Then dry your hands with a paper towel, hand dryer, or air dry them.
Each school will have free standing hand sanitizing stations positioned throughout the school in high traffic areas, including the main office, library, counseling center, cafeteria, and gym. Remind students to avoid touching their eyes, nose, and mouth as much as possible and to cover their coughs and sneezes with a tissue. Once they've used the tissue, have them throw it in the trash and wash their hands immediately with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. If a tissue is unavailable, they can use their elbow to cover a cough or sneeze. There will also be no handshakes, high fives, or hugs. However, air high fives, air elbow bumps, or a simple wave can be used in place of physical contact. If we can all remember these simple tips, we can help keep everyone as safe and as healthy as possible. Hi, my name is Simone, and today we're going to be talking about face coverings. According to the CDC, the COVID-19 virus spreads mainly among people who are in close contact with one another, usually within about six feet. So the use of cloth face coverings is important in settings where people are close to each other or where physical distancing is difficult to maintain. Governor Gary Herbert has issued a mandate that all students and staff will wear face coverings at school. Face coverings will also be required by anyone riding a school bus to and from school. Visitors and volunteers also will need to wear a face covering upon entry into the school building. We want to make sure everyone is wearing their face coverings correctly, so Nurse Alicia Fawson is going to show us how to properly put on a mask.
Each employee and student will receive a lanyard and a mask. I will demonstrate how to put on the mask and then how to take it off and attach it to the lanyard. Please, before putting on your mask and after taking off your mask, make sure to wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. To put on the mask, take the ear loop, put it around your ear, and on the other side, and then adjust the mask using the bottom and top portions of the mask. And then to remove the mask, take the mask by the ear loops, like this, pull it together so that the side facing your face is on the inside so that your germs are contained on the inside. Clip it to your lanyard, and then wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. As an employee, you may be given a face shield. The maximum amount of protection that we can offer you is wearing the face shield and the mask. However, if you choose to only wear the face shield, you do increase your risk of having to be quarantined if you are exposed to a person with COVID-19.
We hope this information was helpful and that you have a great school year.
Hi, I'm Brad. I want to talk to you for a moment about staying home when sick. Don't hesitate to stay home if you feel sick. You should stay home if you have any of the following COVID-19 symptoms: shortness of breath, sore throat or persistent cough, temperature higher than 100.4 degrees, congestion or runny nose, vomiting or diarrhea, or new loss of taste or smell. You should also stay home if you experience other illness symptoms such as severe or long-lasting abdominal pain, rash with fever or strep throat. Also, if you recently had close contact with a person with COVID-19, you should also stay home. If you consider yourself high-risk, you can complete a form with health information that will be shared with the health department to facilitate contact tracing. You can also work with your immediate supervisor if there's a concern about risk. I hope you have a successful and happy start to your school year. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dan, and today we're going to talk about physical distancing, one of my favorite topics. One of the best ways to curb the spread of COVID-19 is by doing our best to physically distance from one another. The rule of thumb is to maintain six feet of distance between yourself and anyone else. Physical distancing is challenging in a school where classroom walls cannot be moved, which is why all staff and students will be wearing face coverings in order to comply with the mandate issued by Governor Gary Herbert. When a teacher is in front of the room during class and can maintain six feet of distance between himself or herself and the students, the teacher will not have to wear a face covering. Show those pearly whites. If the teacher moves closer than six feet, such as for one-to-one instruction, they will be required to wear a face covering. At lunchtime, students will be distanced as much as possible. In elementary schools, lunch will be scheduled by grade level with tables sanitized between each seating. In secondary schools, tables will be spaced apart as much as possible. Students will need to follow directional signage while walking in hallways. There will also be no group gatherings during the school day unless physical distancing can be maintained. While school may be a little different, we are all in this together so we can be safe and healthy.
Hi, I'm Brad. I want to talk to you for a moment about staying home when sick. Don't hesitate to stay home if you feel sick. You should stay home if you have any of the following COVID-19 symptoms: shortness of breath, sore throat or persistent cough, temperature higher than 100.4 degrees, congestion or runny nose, vomiting or diarrhea, or new loss of taste or smell. You should also stay home if you experience other illness symptoms such as severe or long-lasting abdominal pain, rash with fever or strep throat. Also, if you recently had close contact with a person with COVID-19, you should also stay home. If you consider yourself high-risk, you can complete a form with health information that will be shared with the health department to facilitate contact tracing. You can also work with your immediate supervisor if there's a concern about risk. I hope you have a successful and happy start to your school year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Simone, and today we're going to be talking about face coverings. According to the CDC, the COVID-19 virus spreads mainly among people who are in close contact with one another, usually within about six feet. So the use of cloth face coverings is important in settings where people are close to each other or where physical distancing is difficult to maintain. Governor Gary Herbert has issued a mandate that all students and staff will wear face coverings at school. Face coverings will also be required by anyone riding a school bus to and from school. Visitors and volunteers also will need to wear a face covering upon entry into the school building. We want to make sure everyone is wearing their face coverings correctly, so Nurse Alicia Fawson is going to show us how to properly put on a mask.
Each employee and student will receive a lanyard and a mask. I will demonstrate how to put on the mask and then how to take it off and attach it to the lanyard. Please, before putting on your mask and after taking off your mask, make sure to wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. To put on the mask, take the ear loop, put it around your ear, and on the other side, and then adjust the mask using the bottom and top portions of the mask. And then to remove the mask, take the mask by the ear loops, like this, pull it together so that the side facing your face is on the inside so that your germs are contained on the inside. Clip it to your lanyard, and then wash your hands or use hand sanitizer. As an employee, you may be given a face shield. The maximum amount of protection that we can offer you is wearing the face shield and the mask.
We want to welcome everybody this afternoon to our board workshop. We appreciate you being with us. Ms. Hanson, do we have any public comments? Thank you. We look forward to our agenda this afternoon. We are impressed and excited to see the many different things that will be presented to the board tonight, and hopefully as we go through this with the discussion that we might have, we'll all learn, I'm sure we will throughout the evening. We want to start with our first agenda item. We didn't have anybody sign up for public comments, so we're going to go to our agenda items beginning with Mr. Zerbakin on a COVID-19 update. Mr. Zerbakin, please.
Oh, golly. Where we are with masking, where we are with high-risk individuals, where we are with dashboards, and provide you some opportunity to have the discussion about where we are with those. I'd like to start first off with the dashboard. We had made comment at our last board meeting that we would be developing a dashboard, and as a preface to this, just like, I know one thing that many are asking, not just the board and our school district, but our governor, our national government, is what is the number? And unfortunately, the number doesn't exist. Many numbers exist in terms of making decisions, in terms of how most appropriately to provide education in a safe environment. But we do recognize the need to be able, for you and for us, to be able to communicate to our public that these are the types of data points we're looking at. What I'm going to provide for you and is provided on the screen is not locked in stone. It's really just formed cement, and we still have to, you know, to level it out and put in the expansion joints. But these are the types of things that we're going to be looking at as we open school and as we move forward. Keeping in mind that, once we open school, we're not really going to see the impact of the way we've opened until we get two weeks down the road. It's going to take a little bit of time for us to see it, and then once we get, that's why the mid-September date of publishing a dashboard is provided because it's going to be that long until we actually have this data. We do have the state and county data, and you can find that on both the coronavirus.gov website as well as the Davis County Health Department. What we're going to look at in terms of state and county are the percentage of positive cases. That's a percentage of cases which are positive based on total numbers of tests. So if you have 100 tests and you have 10 positives, you have a positive percentage of 10%. We'll be looking at that both at the state and at the county level. Today, if you go on the dashboard, the county's at 5.9. Again, the number, we're going to keep, you know, I know there's that, okay, where is that fulcrum? Well, there isn't truly a fulcrum where that exists. We used to think it was 5%, but what has changed is the number of tests have decreased significantly. And what we don't know about the number of tests being shrunk, whether or not it means just six people are being tested, or people with symptoms are choosing not to be tested. There's some ambiguity there, but it is an important number and one that certainly we should look at in terms of the county. The other are the cases per 100,000. We'll look at that. That again is a relevant number for us just to get an idea of where's the county at, not just where our schools are at. The next two, I think, are really important for us. As we go, our dashboard will identify the positive cases. Those are confirmed COVID-19 cases among our students and staff. We will not be disaggregating that by school because if we do that by school and if our end size is real small, we run the risk of identifying exactly who it is. And it's important for us in our data not to provide data sources that say, oh, we know who that one case is at Holbrook Elementary. So we'll report that as a district, and we will report both student and staff current positive cases today and cumulative cases. You see the difference between who is actually positive on that day and how many positives we had since we started keeping track? So obviously, how many we've had will always increase because if we have one today and two tomorrow, that's two and three the next day. But the current positive will be different than the cumulative positive. We will also look, and this is important for us in terms of continuity of education, we'll look at the numbers of students quarantined. In a slide that we'll reference in a moment, the health department and the state, and the state school opening manual identifies very clearly what we will do in terms of contact tracing and how we will quarantine, and how many people we will quarantine before we start quarantining classes and schools. The quarantine number is important for us because the more students that are going from school, the harder it is to maintain continuity of education. So those are two numbers we'll look at. Another that we'll look at is the reference to what's happening in other districts. Because we are on the alternate day schedule, and many of our companion districts around us are on different types of four-day schedules, shortened days, no Fridays, but they are in school more than we are, and they're with all their kids. We will look at what are their quarantine and positive rate levels and what are ours? That comparative base is important because that will inform us whether or not our schedule has made a difference relative to theirs. Clearly, the assumption is that because we have fewer kids and we can physically distance, we will not have the same quarantine numbers that schools that cannot physically distance would have. That's our belief at this point, and that will be proved out by data. What we intend to do with that data is each Friday, provide live updates with the cumulative numbers from the previous week, and provide that on a dashboard on our homepage for our patrons to be able to see what that means. Now, those are good numbers. They will be informative. We will be asked, at what point does that force you to make a decision? I hope you can tell from my comments so far is that, again, there is not a number. It will be relative to what's going on in our other districts, what are our infection rates looking like, and what does the county look like? We do know without a doubt, Davis County as a community is doing a great job. Although 5.9% is higher than they would, we would actually like, it's below the state positive rate, which is just below 10%, and it's a number that's been decreasing, as well as our positive cases in the county have been decreasing. Those are great, those are great signs. Those are great directional numbers. But until we put our kids into our classrooms and we have the opportunity to interact on a consistent, permanent basis, we won't know what that means for our kids and our teachers. That is why we're looking at publishing this to start in the middle of September when those numbers start to have relevance.
Mr. Zerbakin?
Yes.
What did you mention about on Fridays, you're going to publish the dashboard?
Yes, we will do that starting the middle of February. We'll publish that.
September.
I'm sorry.
September. You said February.
February, thanks. I don't know where I got that. In September, somewhere around September 15th, and it will stay up. So the new data will come every Friday, and then that data will remain static till the following Friday, and then we will update each Friday from the middle of September on. Those, that will give our community idea of the numbers we're looking at. Those, that will give our community idea of the numbers we're looking at as we have conversations about, how are we doing? What does it mean for our schedule? What does it mean for future direction and moves? And Board, if I could, rather than mush you through 20 minutes of presentation, a lot of talking, and then go, oh, but way back then, I would suggest that we do questions at the end of each slide, because while they are interconnected, I think that they're all topical enough where you probably have questions on each one. So at this point, I entertain any questions or comments or discussion that you have.
Mr. Zerbakan? I'm guessing that a case won't be counted unless there's been a positive test, COVID test completed? And how will that information be communicated? Is it just the parent, or the employee, or does the doctor's office have to, you know? How can we be certain?
How do we know?
Yeah.
How do we know that a case is positive? Because we hear all over the place, right? We will only count positive tests that are reported to the Health Department. Physicians, once that test is initiated, that test will go to the physician. The physician then has to take it to the appropriate Health Department. That's an important point, because if you are a Weber resident, but a Davis teacher, and you become positive, you will actually count to Weber County's numbers, not to Davis County numbers. So we could have a positive case of an individual. We'll know that, we'll still find out that that individual's positive from the Health Department. It won't count against the county, but it will be data that we will keep in terms of total positive cases for our staff. But that's a great point, because we hear all the time, but it will be verified by the Health Department.
Ms. Vips?
A person stays on the list as a positive until they have tested negative. Is that correct?
They are on the positive list until they, after a 14-day isolation period, and then they are symptom-free for 24 hours without any medication. And if it's okay, it doesn't mean, when I move to the next slide, doesn't mean you can't refer back to this one. I just, I think it's good to take each one in its turn. Contact tracing is something that we will do well. I was going to say excited about, well, truly, we're not excited about any of this. But it's something that I think we are well-planned for. But I remind you that the Health Department was able to offset costs for us to be able to hire a COVID-19 aide, one at every elementary school and two at every high school. Today was our first training with the aides. We're training our elementary in the morning, our secondary in the afternoon. We'll repeat that training on Thursday, and that training is being provided by the Health Department to talk specifically about what is the role and how do our aides contact trace? And how do they collect data, and how do they share data? Health Department's put together a shared Google Doc spreadsheet that they'll be, that all of our aides will be using to input their information. It's also, that document is where we will share all of our at-risk individuals, our highly-at-risk teachers and students, so that we make sure that we're notifying them first. But that, to me, is a very important piece. The state only requires that every school identify an administrative point of contact. That is the state requirement. So every school across the state has to identify an administrator, who's the point of contact, who technically is that contact tracer. We realized early on that that's not going to happen. It's not going to work well, so we knew we had to go with contact tracers and hire new people. And the Health Department very fortunately stepped up for us. What I want to speak to are the outbreaks and quarantines. And this comes from the USBE School Opening Manual that was put together with the State Health Department. They define an outbreak as three individuals in a classroom over a 14-day period. If that happens in a classroom, and remember, it's over a 14-day period, so we could have two today, and we could have one next Monday, and that's inside of a seven-day period. If that happens, the entire classroom will be quarantined if we have three in 14 days. And that's not a choice. That's not a, can we get around that? That is what will happen if there are three in 14 days. And for a school, it is either 15 or 10% of their school population, whichever is least. So for us, it's 15. There's no school where 10% is less than 15. And the same thing, if we have a school where we have 15 individual cases, documented cases from the Health Department, inside of a 14-day window, that school will be put on a 14-day quarantine. And just so that we're clear, if our number three happens today, and this is our classroom, that means tomorrow we start to quarantine. It doesn't mean, let's notify everybody in a couple of days, get your schedules together, and we'll quarantine. It means the next day, we go on quarantine. It will be very, very inconvenient for our families, without question. That is one place where we believe that the alternative schedule provides us with some leadway, and that since we're physical distancing, and we're not going to, should not have the same disease spread, the possibility of having an outbreak like that is remote, but it exists. And I want, I think it's very important for the board to know. It's not a choice on our behalf. It's not, we've chosen these numbers, and we've chosen to react this way. This comes from the State Health Department and the school opening manual from USBE. Any questions on the contact tracing?
Just one more time, did you say the number 15 or 15%?
It's the number 15.
So whether I'm a school of 250 or a school of 2,000, it's the same number?
Exactly.
Could you just speak a little bit, so if one cohort of a teacher is quarantined, would that teacher continue instructing then virtually to the cohort that still attends on the other day? How do you see that working?
I would defer to Dr. Toon on that.
We haven't discussed that.
Okay. So kind of, but some combination of substitutes and licensed teachers working on that?
In an elementary, it'll be somewhat, in terms of the grouping, simple, because you're my teacher, and you're the only teacher we have. In high school, that will have an impact, because that teacher and that class, third period, they'll all be quarantined, but that teacher teaches four other classes. And so we'll have a sub for those four other classes.
When a teacher is out on sick leave, you can't require them to come back.
Okay. Substitute, okay.
Are they required to take their sick leave if they're being told they have to quarantine?
Great question. The HEROES Act, which is in place until the 21st of December, does provide for 10 days of COVID leave. So if they are quarantined the first time, 14 days is 10 school days and two weekends. So they will be able to use their COVID leave for that first quarantine.
So they have to use it for that? They don't, there's no free pass? It's like, sorry, you get quarantined even though you might not be sick, or?
Correct. Great point.
Okay.
And let me, I just want to highlight Ms. Tanner's point. It's not, we only quarantine those who are infected. When we get that infection in a class, three people in a class of, we're on the AB to have 20 kids and the teacher, it's all 20 and the teacher at that point. Although three of them are the only ones that we have positive cases for, it's all of them and the teacher. And we're somewhat used to this, because this is what we've done all summer with our sports teams. Cloth face masks, which have, we've seen this evolve over the last month from the first health order and the governor's proclamation to his clarification last Friday. We know that at first it came out, and it still is, face coverings. And the initial clarification of face coverings was that face shields also counted as face coverings. Last Friday, the governor clarified that and clarified his order that said, no face shield, do not take the place of cloth face mask, that one must wear a cloth face mask. And a cloth face mask being defined as a mask that fits snugly around the nose and the cheeks, and fits underneath the chin snugly, and does not have a valve or respirator. So a lot of those have those little valves. Those also will not work, because they actually expectorate, you know, the droplets as well. So they defined very clearly what a cloth face mask was, and also mandated that everyone wear those unless they are able to get an exemption for very specific, either health, physical health or mental health reasons. I've included in your board packet our exemptions for those. Our process for those exemptions are that the parent takes that form, they have it filled out by the doctor. In that form, when the parent signs it, it provides a waiver to the parent, to us, so that we can have a conversation with their healthcare provider. So it waives the HIPAA rights to have the conversation about the situation that necessitates the exemption. And then we will, we have a committee. It's risk management and nursing. So it's Margot Hill, Scott Zigich, and we're having a few other nurses on that to look at those one by one, ascertain whether or not those are allowable legitimate exemptions. If they have a question, they can call, contact the doctor and have the conversation. When that exemption is granted for students, we are able to show that on Encore, because the question when it's, when it's, when you have an exemption is, how do we know? So, and this is most appropriate for secondary schools. You're always moving all over, and it's a second, you don't know all the kids. And teachers are there to help enforce the mask rule. So you see a child without a mask, what, how do you interact with that child? We are developing badging, and we'll have badges for those kids, because in all our secondary schools, now they're wearing badges. We'll have a second badge that they will wear, that will be a brightly colored badge, that will have their student ID number on the back, as well as the number of their exemption. We'll number them 1, 2, whatever number we get to, so that they're identifiable to staff. So you can look at their ID, and you'll see their ID, and the badge that will be behind it will be larger. So you go, oh, they've got an exemption, I'll have to talk with them. Because we recognize right away that there's an opportunity for some miscommunication, putting teachers in some tough spots and kids in some tough spots. So that's for both, and we also have it for employees. And the conversation for employees and for students, what we're having when they get the exemption is we're following up to say to the parent or the employee, you do realize that getting this exemption does exempt you from wearing the mask, but what it does not exempt you from is being quarantined when there is an active case. For example, if I were a teacher who had an exemption, I don't have to wear my mask, but if Mr. Newley is infected and he's in my class, I'm going to be quarantined, because I wasn't wearing a mask. If I were wearing a mask, I would not be quarantined. That's just, that's the opportunity cost for the exemption. That's the same for a student, that when a student doesn't wear a mask, if there is a positive case in a classroom which they were also in, that student will be quarantined, because they did not have the appropriate PPE. So we're making sure that every parent and every staff member knows that when they are granted the exceptions. Questions on the exemptions?
This may have been in there, but again, I can't bring it up. I've got it fixed out. But are people that are visiting in the schools, are they able to do one of those exemption forms also?
No, they are not, because they are visitors.
Any visitor has to wear a mask, no questions asked?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Vips?
I'm always just, you know, have to process, and I come up with a question five miles back the road. Can I just ask you, so on an AB schedule, so all those kids, if I'm on the A day, and I wasn't in the classroom, why am I involved in a quarantine for a classroom that I wasn't in and exposed to those students?
So.
So if I have a, so I'm in this Ms. Jones' third-grade class. I go on B day, not on A day, and it was the A day group, there's three kids.
Great point. If that's, so you are an A-day student of Ms. Jones, but B day has the quarantine. You would not be quarantined, but Ms. Jones would, because Ms. Jones was in that class.
Okay. Then the other question I have is just, then, if all students are now being required to wear masks, then I guess I just need some clarification of why our, the need for an every-other-day is opposed? If, I mean, the distance is happening, and that was one of the things that, you know, was our premise, is that we needed to be able to distance. But now, whether I'm distanced or not, I still have to wear a mask, which seems like that overcomes why we moved to the every-other-day as opposed to five days.
If we had full classrooms, so we have a normal Utah classroom, 30, 35 kids, and we're all masked, because we would be all masked, because of the fact that we could not defend a six-foot physical distance and the 15-minute rule, what we would do is we'd look at, Ms. Vips is positive, and Ms. Stevenson sits right there, and she sits there pretty much all day. You're positive, she's not. You're going. You're going to be quarantined. And Mr. Carter is going to be quarantined. Where, if we're on an AB day, neither of those are there on the day that you were sick, because you're A, they're B. And Ms. Gerard will not be quarantined, because she never got inside of the six-foot distance for the 15 minutes. That's what that, that's why the physical, we believe, the physical distancing to start the school year provides us the opportunity not to have, when we have positive cases, not to quarantine a lot of kids.
Thanks.
And finally, the high-risk self-identification. We've had, as of yesterday at 3 o'clock, we had about 1,200 identifications between staff and students for high-risk identification. We made it available on my DSD and through Encore on Friday. It is voluntary, and no employee or family identifies what the condition is. It just lists the condition and literally asks them, are you a high-risk employee or student, yes or no? Then we will take that information, when we start school on Tuesday, we will take that information, get to each of the point of contacts at each of the school in a spreadsheet, so that at the time that there is a positive case, the first people that we will go to talk with and to talk about where you were to do our interviews will be the high-risk individuals. That's where we'll start our contact tracing. And after that, and what we'll do for a family, that COVID-19 aide will contact the parent to say, I just want you to know, since you identified this, that there was a positive case in your child's classroom, we've ascertained that your child is not at risk, because they were, they had physical distancing, they were wearing masks, but you did identify high risk, and as a parent, you always have the option of whether or not to quarantine your child. We do not recommend it. That will come from our COVID-19 aide. And when this, as the pandemic, when the pandemic's done, and someday it will be, we will expunge this data from both the Health Department files as well as ours. So we're not, this is data we will only have during the pandemic. When the pandemic is done, this will be expunged from our system. Are there any other questions?
A comment that I'd like to make is, I don't think it can be overemphasized, the value of the relationship that we have with Davis County Health Department, which we've always had. I know that our nurses, Mr. Zigich, they've established many years ago, and others before them. But having the opportunity here, Mr. Hatch, the other day, I think as a board, you know, we need to be aware of the fact that what is happening in our county with our Health Department in conjunction with our district, to our knowledge, is the only county that has the support of the Health Department like we do. And that's medical support, the council, but also financially, some things that have been done. I think it's, it just, it's a credit to your committees, Mr. Zerbakan, our administration, as well as Mr. Hatch and his staff. But to think of the value of these contact tracers in our elementarys, junior highs, and high schools, and the value of them not just to be able to trace the people that might have been affected by this or infected by this, but to help throughout the day to keep, you know, to minimize the risk as best they can by doing the things that, you know, in the halls, in lunchrooms, in the playgrounds. So I just express, I mean, my appreciation, knowing some of the things that have taken place. And I think we, as a board, all feel very appreciative of the fact that that relationship is there, and look forward to that being a key part of what we do moving forward.
I'll share that with Mr. Hatch.
Other questions for Mr. Zerbakan, Board?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Toon, we're going to turn the time to you now for instruction update, please. And I think we are referencing, this is part of what we referenced.
Yeah, that's part of the discussion today. We're going to try and hit a lot of instructional issues, not issues necessarily, but instructional topics today. With your permission, I'd like to proceed like this. I'd like to briefly outline some of the academic indicators that we were watching and monitoring. Some of those are related to COVID-19 pandemic, and some of them are not. And then I'd like to invite Mr. Grover to take a few minutes to address our STEM programs, and then Ms. Robbins to address the citizenship and the social studies questions that were raised by the board, a board member in an email earlier. And then I'd like Ms. Cook to overview the guidance that's been provided to our teachers regarding the delivery of instruction in the alternating-day hybrid model. And then with that, I would like to address some of the assessment and... And then with, with that, I would like to address some of the assessment and like learning gap type discussion that we've had a lot of conversation about. And field any questions at that point, is that appropriate if we proceed like that?
That's great.
Great. Thank you. So these slides were included in the board handout. And so if you're not able to view them on the screen up here, you'll be able to see them later. I'll, I'm going to briefly just review some of these academic indicators. As we think about COVID-19 in the school, the adjustments to schedules and what we did in the spring with the remote, you know, the, the soft closure and remote delivery, what we're doing now with a temporary period of hybrid delivery. Our targets in terms of learning haven't really moved that much. We have, we still want to maintain our high graduation rates and AP pass rates. And so some of these indicators, you know, in what way, we're not really changing our outcomes or our targets. We want to still deliver the types of learning for our students that we've always been able to deliver. These are advanced placement tests. Now, the timing of advanced placement is, we, we prepared our students for advanced placement throughout the year. We went on a soft closure in about March. And typically about mid-April is when our advanced placement classes really hit the really aggressive review and the tests were administered in May. This is the first time that advanced placement tests were administered online ever. And they were administered nationally, online, and it was the first experience we had with large-scale testing in a fully remote setting. And so these are the numbers that we see and we did see a slight decline in the total number of tests administered and, but one of the findings that we had was that our pass rate remained the same, which we were, we were excited to see that. That the students who did, were able to engage in those tests were high, but that we retained our pass rate from the prior year. We're looking at ways to increase our test numbers always and test numbers follow class participation numbers. ACT was administered, usually we look at that. When we're looking at ACT, they're administered all throughout the year and kids can take them multiple times. For the comparability sake, we usually look at that big ACT test that all juniors take. And that's usually the last week of February or the first week of March. So this reflects those tests. This was pre-COVID, pre, well, the, the virus was around, but this was before the, the soft closure. And we experienced a slight drop in the previous year, the eighteen, nineteen school year. And the nineteen, twenty school year, we rebounded after that and then increased even further above where we were. These are the best ACT scores the students in Davis School District have ever experienced and we're happy about that. So in, in a discussion with the PTA this last week, I, I use this phrase that our college preparation is alive and well. And that continues to remain a top priority for us as we navigate the challenging times that we're in right now as well. In the, during the fourth term, so now kind of turning more towards a discussion about remote closure during last spring. We, we modified the way that we distributed our letter grades in fourth term. And the board may remember some of the communication that was there. We did not award any F letter grades. Instead, we awarded I letter grades, which would have an extended period of time to remediate. We're still in that period of remediation, that goes until September thirtieth of this year. So students can still remediate some of those Is from the prior terms. But we, we noticed basically the number of As given stayed about the same. The number of Bs, Cs and Ds decreased as we saw the, the number of passing letter grades increase. And the number of Is was slightly higher than about where, it was about where we were in second term, equivalent to the number of Fs that we gave maybe slightly higher. This, the, neither the P letter grade nor the I letter grade affected the grade point average. So the increase in our overall grade point average was expected just by virtue of the increase in Ps and Is that we got. You know, you give fewer Bs, Cs and Ds and more Ps, that's going to affect the grade point average for positives. So that's our overall grade point average over time. In the elementary grade book, which it grades a little bit differently, it's on a scale of one to three and they have the, the letter, the grade outcomes kind of build on each other throughout the term. We did see an expected increase in fourth term even during those remote closures. Now, all these are teacher-reported levels of student mastery. And we recognize and are not deaf to the concerns from individuals who maybe feel like there were some learning challenges. And we know those learning challenges were present during remote learning. And we anticipate addressing many of those as we pick up with face-to-face instruction and on an alternating model as we move forward. And just as an FYI, this was current when I sent it to Ms. Hanson for inclusion in the board. That number is now six, six thousand four hundred and forty something that I can't remember. So we're, we, we have over six thousand students enrolled in our Davis Connect Online program in any one of the various models that we've, that we've set up there for them. So that's a quick academic update and I'll invite Mr. Grover to come and do STEM.
Any questions for Mr., Dr. Toon? Go ahead, Mr. Grover.
President, Vice President, Board, thanks for letting me come here today and share some bright spots with you. So in your packet, you should have received our STEM report for Davis School District that covers specifically this last school year, but also kind of gives longitudinal data back about four years for some of the programs that we're going to look at. Also, there are copies of the report available over by Ms. Hanson at the table if anybody would like a copy of that as we go. So first off, there's kind of big, three big things I want to go over with you today in terms of the report. The first thing is going to be what I view as the biggest success that we've had in that area over the course of the last couple of years. And we're going to reference that on pages five and six. After we go over that, I'm going to go through several highlights throughout the report. So I'll be referencing pages for us to turn to and to look at specific things throughout that. And then from there, we'll kind of hit on our plans moving forward at that point. So on pages five and six, what you'll see is over the last three years in partnership with many principals, teachers, lots and lots of industry partners, we have held several year-long committees that have gone through the work of really identifying and clearly developing a picture and a model for what STEM education looks like in Davis School District. One of the biggest things that we found in our initial data analysis across the district with principals and with community members was that nobody knew what we were talking about. And there was a variety of different messages, variety of different definitions, and we had no clear indicators that would, that we'd be able to look to in order to be able to actually measure equitable access and also what it looks like in the classroom across a variety of different schools and different settings. And so we went to the work of really going through and defining out what that looks like and coming up with clear measurable indicators that we can look to, that principals can look to, that teachers can look to for reflection when they're in their classrooms. So pages five and six, that is where it kind of overviews that for you in terms of what we mean when we say that. So when you have some time, please look through that and read it in detail. It's, it's got some great information in there. And if you have any questions, you can always reach out to me. The next piece, I'm, we're going to be kind of flipping through a bunch of pages on this, but I want to highlight some of the, the big things that stood out. We've done a huge data analysis across all of our programs, across the district. And these are some of the kind of amazing things that we found out as we went through this and we're looking at all of our programs. So the biggest thing is that we can pretty consistently say at this point that we do have, from top to bottom, K-12, a very systemic STEM framework. Where in core classes, we can have that kind of learning happening, where we have supplemental programs happening, that we have that happening distributed across the district fairly evenly and, and equitably. When we did an analysis of all the evaluate Davis data, we looked at particular indicators eighteen and twenty-seven, which on teacher observation forums, those two indicators specifically call out whether or not the indicators on pages five and six are taking place in the classroom. And when we did that analysis across all of the schools, we found that eighty percent of teachers were showing some form of STEM-centered learning happening in their classrooms. And then from that eight percent, we also looked at the qualitative data of that, of the comments that were being given from administrators to teachers in terms of things that they were highlighting or things that they were asking them to particularly focus on. You can see some of those on page, so these are on pages nine and ten. Page nine talks about the indicators and then page ten shows some of the comments that we pulled out of the data analysis as we were going through all of those. There was a strong positive correlation to our indicators within those comments. So that was a huge bright spot for us. And then as we dug deeper, what we, and it's, you know, lots of different departments within the district, CTE, Art Department, STEM, and just the principals of the schools have been pushing hard to develop this framework. And one of the big things that's come out of this is since 2015, we've seen a forty-three percent increase in advanced math enrollment. You can see that number on page four. Also, if you want to turn to page fifteen, there's a bunch of statistics we'll kind of reference from that page. One of the big pushes we've had over the last while is to, that, because from our data, we found that we had a, kind of a big hole when it comes to computer science education and computational thinking style courses. And I have to give a, a lot of kudos and thanks to Jay Welk with the CT Department. They have done huge work over the last few years to build that and to really create opportunities for students to be able to participate in those kinds of courses that weren't there before. And it really shows in the data. What, what we saw as we were pulling it is that female enrollment in computer science classes from 2016 till now is eight times greater. And that comes out to an eighty-eight percent increase in female enrollment between 2016 and this last school year in computer science courses. So for us, that was a huge bright spot to see in there for sure. One more statistic for you. We also found that as we started looking at teacher endorsements and the kinds of things teachers were doing to be prepared to facilitate these kinds of programs, we pulled all the teachers' endorsements and ranked those out into what we would consider a STEM-based endorsement. And about forty percent of teachers across the district hold some form of STEM-related endorsement. And that's come from a variety of programs with partnerships with different universities where, like our department's been running the STEM endorsement and CTE's also been running lots of endorsements with industry partners to build up teachers' computer science endorsements and backgrounds. And so that's really increased over the last, also forty percent of teachers in Davis hold some form of a STEM endorsement. So I think that paints a really positive picture. There's been a lot of work going on and the amount of access and the amount of opportunity for students has dramatically gone up. And I hope that's what you pull out of the report as you look at it, is that the big takeaway for me as we were putting it together is that all of the work that's been done over the last three years has worked to increase opportunity and really build that framework. And then the last thing I wanted to share with you all is that in talking with Jay and the members of my team, we are extremely excited to come back next year with another report that shows that we maintained this over the course of this year and that we were able to keep wonder, sense-making and problem-solving alive in the schools. And we are, we have plans to support teachers in that and we are dedicated to that and we're going to make sure it happens. So thank you.
Hello, Board President and everyone, thanks so much for having us tonight. A member of the board reached out to us, receiving an email, and we felt that it was very pertinent tonight to share some information with you based on the feedback from that, that email. I prepared a summary of how the curriculum supports the development of our young people in these critical areas outlined in the documents before you, hopefully you have them. Davis School District's social studies standards have recently been revised to focus more on skills than on content. We now refer to these skills as priority skills. To briefly share an example of these skills or what is now known as our priority skills, I thought it may be helpful to go through just a few to give you an idea of what we're talking about when we reference skills. For instance, in seventh grade, Utah Studies, we analyze similarities, differences and connections between relevant concepts. When we move to grades eight and eleven, we analyze causes and effects and analyze the context of historical events, documents and developments. When we move along into twelfth grade, our skills switch to demonstrate understanding of concepts and processes in political science and US government. I need to point out to each of you that all DSD social studies courses share one goal, and that is to demonstrate effective communication through writing, listening and speaking. Our teachers are expected to refer to the USBE curriculum as their resource for determining appropriate content to be used as students work to master these skills. I'd like to share with you, and it is in front of you, but I thought it was relevant and very pertinent for me to address it word by word so that you understand how important this civic prepar-, prepar-, preparedness guidance is for us. I quote, "Civic engagement is one of the fundamental purposes of education. It is vital that public schools fulfill their civic mission, the preparation of young people for participation in America's democratic republic. The progress of our communities, state, nation and world rests upon the preparation of young people to address problems collaboratively and deliberately, to defend their own rights and the rights of others, and to balance personal interests with the common good. Social studies classrooms are the ideal location to foster civic virtue, consider current issues, learn how to act civilly towards others, build a civic identity and promote awareness of global issues. These skills, habits and qualities of character will prepare our students to accept responsibility for preserving and defending their liberties. To reach these goals, students in all social studies courses in Davis School District should have ample, ample opportunities to do the following. Number one, engage in deliberative, collaborative and civil dialogue regarding historical and current events. Identify local, state, national and international problems. Consider solutions to these problems. Apply knowledge of governmental structures, concepts, geographic interrelationships and economic principles to help identify and explain civic and current events. Develop and demonstrate values that sustain America's democratic republic such as open-mindedness, engagement, honest, problem-solving, responsibility, diligence, resilience, empathy, self-control and cooperation." We also have course content. There are content categories and topics that are identified, but we don't emphasize these in the desk standards. The seventh grade Utah Studies course is the only one for which the district provides a more prescribed content. It has eleven modules in it, two of the modules which touch directly on issues of citizenship, one of them being called Understanding Government in Utah and the second one called Participating in Government in Utah. The twelfth grade US Government and Citizenship course indicates that teachers should select material related to citizenship in the following categories. And they are outlined for you, I'll just briefly review them. Foundations of American Government, Protections and Privileges of Individuals and Groups Within the United States and Citizenship and Participation in Government. In conclusion, and quoting something from our director, Belinda Cook, "We know that social studies is not a tested subject, but every day we see the effects of it being tested on us. In our continued efforts moving forward, we will be focused on our priority standards, those skills that I've talked about, and very strategic in the professional development that we develop for our teachers and that we provide for our teachers so that we can sustain the wonderful teaching that's going on in our social studies classroom." This is an instructional priority for us and a focus for us, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Robinson, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I'm going to speak about the hybrid guidance, the guidance that was released to principals a couple of weeks ago and that in subsequent days will be released in emails in their grade level teams through Microsoft and again through their principals. So we worked with school leaders, teachers, our DEA leadership staff as well as teaching and learning staff to develop two different kinds of guidance. The first guidance was high-level, fairly generic for secondary and for elementary and is included in your packet. The second level of guidance came from teaching and learning staff and was specific to each content area for elementary through secondary. In the general document, I would like to point out, excuse me, one of the sections that we have included called unfinished learning. An unfinished learning comes from a strengths-based lens instead of a deficit-based lens. We don't want to talk about students' gaps and holes in their learning. We'd rather talk about where their learning has been unfinished. And Ms. Stevenson, as a former teacher, you know that every year students came to class and they all had some type of unfinished learning.
And Belinda, I read this last night and I loved that statement, it was awesome.
So we want to focus on student strengths. We know that every year they come with some unfinished learning. We may have more unfinished learning this year, but we really want to focus on. We may have more unfinished learning this year, but we really want to focus on how we can continue to grow them. We don't want to spend so much time on review that we do not get to grade-level content. Our recommendation is we start on grade-level content. We identify the prerequisite standard and not necessarily pre-assess what a student knows about the next thing we're going to teach, but what they know that is the antecedent to the standard that's going to be taught and shore the students up through some really deep, rich tasks and activities to help bring them to the point where they have that unfinished learning that can be finished and then moved on. As we have looked at several standards alignments across the district, across the state and some across the nation, what we're finding is that not all of our standards are aligned sequentially, that just because we did it in third grade doesn't mean that it aligns perfectly to fourth grade. It might align better to fifth grade. We found that in particular with math concepts, especially from second grade to fourth grade. So they may not have had the rich experience in the spring for third grade, but it shouldn't hold them back from having a rich experience in fourth grade. So we're really focused on helping our students start on grade-level content and help meet the needs as we continue to move forward on that grade-level content. The recommendations also include what should they be doing in class, what should happen at home and what should happen on Fridays. And what happened in the spring was sometimes they were just on a computer at home. We want the learning at home to also be very active and to be rich and to have high rigor as well as high applicability. So what are they being asked to apply? Maybe they're going to be doing some front-loading. Maybe they're going to watch a video to prepare them for a discussion in class, so that class. We call that a lot of times flipped learning or the flipped classroom. So we're going to see some of that. I know a lot of teachers are really going to try and leverage that and have been studying that over the summer. How can I prepare them so we can have really rich in-class experiences? We have a lot of software that the state provides as well as the district provides, and we've asked teachers to spend their time on, in class, really in those rich face-to-face and to have the students work on those adaptive software programs such as Alex or Dreambox or Lexia or Imagine Learning at home, that that's a good activity for students to do at home because it is adaptive, it is personalized and they can follow that path. Some other materials that we have prepared that are coming out tomorrow. We have prepared six videos from six teachers who are sharing their thoughts and ideas about how they're going to approach hybrid learning. We have a kindergarten teacher, a fourth-grade teacher, a special ed teacher, a secondary English Language Arts, a CTE and Fine Arts. Thank you. And they'll be released tomorrow again in all of the communication paths, in emails, in teams to principals so that teachers will have a chance to watch those videos of their colleagues and hopefully that will provide a springboard for them to develop more ideas of their own. What I am most proud of and most proud of my team is the curriculum resource that we have provided. So we've adopted, as you know, Canvas K-12 across all of our schools and all of our classes, and at every level we have varying expertise with Canvas. We have a lot of kindergarten teachers who are really scared and worried that kids can't do it. I say our kids are much more capable than sometimes we believe they are, and we just need to teach them the routines and procedures and they're going to be just fine. The biggest support to our teachers will be those Canvas courses. Seven content areas in elementary, elementary, English Language Arts, math, science, social studies, fine arts, health and PE and computer science across all seven grade levels. And first term is completely done, has been posted and teachers have been able to access and to pull that content into their own Canvas course as well as the templates that we've purchased so that it helps keep the teachers organized and keeps, keep the look the same across all of our students at the district. I'm incredibly, incredibly proud of my team. It's been a lot of work. We've involved over a hundred teachers in the building of that content. It was built by teachers for teachers and led by my team. We have a motto and a hashtag in the Teaching and Learning Department of hashtag service and support, and I don't think that my team could have exemplified that any greater than they have this last eight weeks.
Okay, so briefly talk about, just a little bit of a follow-on conversation on the unfinished learning piece. We understand that there are a lot of people who are concerned about the effect of spring remote learning and the effect of the forthcoming hybrid remote, in-person alternating learning that, that will have an effect on learning outcomes, and we share that concern. So the best place to assess and remediate those, that little bit of unfinished learning that may be there is in the classroom. And our teachers are accustomed to this. Like Ms. Cook said, this happens every year. Students come in with unfinished learning. It may be more pronounced this year and it may be a little bit more persistent this year as we don't have the opportunity of every single day instruction with every single student. So briefly wanted to address a couple of things on assessment. There's a document in your packet which you can read, I won't review all of it. Ms. Monalay is working to provide a series of resources for teachers to use that are live, that are immediate, right in the classroom, measures that kind of assist and support that understanding that teachers need about what they need to do in order to respond. So I have this learning target for today and there's a little gap for these students right here. What tools are there that will help me know what that gap is and how to assess it? Some people have reached out and specifically asked for like standardized formal assessments to demonstrate the effectiveness of hybrid learning. Well, we don't have those. We intend to do our beginning-of-the-year DIBELS assessment like we always do. The DIBELS assessment has ongoing progress monitoring and drill-down type diagnostic assessments that will inform our practice. We've, we've used those for years. We have a series of protocols and procedures in place that our, our English Language Arts instructors are, are well-versed in. But really that's, that's the extent of our, and their kindergarten assessment too, but really that's the extent of our standardized assessment that we do in the fall. We will very carefully attend to and keep the board apprised of any other standardized assessment data that we have. ACT data as soon as it becomes available, those end-of-year course tests that we have, which were suspended last year, so it'd be hard to find some comparable baselines. But we will watch those large-scale measures and comparabilities across districts. Most likely, that type of large-scale assessment data will lag significantly. My hope is, and I think all of our hope is, that the pandemic is a thing of the past when we have the opportunity to have comparable statewide data that will assess our work in it. So our top priority right now is assessing those learning gaps, unfinished learning I should say, and, and providing resources to teachers. There's a series of resources listed in the document here as well as some additional resources that Teaching and Learning and Assessment have put out. We'd be happy to spend some time individually with you going over any of those if you'd like to see them. So knowing that, that's a lot to cover and it's a lot of us talking at you, and I apologize for that and works up to any, but what questions or thoughts or discussion do you have?
Ms. Phipps?
Thank you. I have several questions. And again, apologize, some of it's going to go back, but the two people on either side will tell you that they hear this grinding sound and it's the wheels going and as they get older, they need some oil, but, so they go slower. But I, I wanted to, you know, one of the things that, I love numbers, I love data, I love that, and, and that's usually considered geeky or weird by most people in the world, those of us who do like those. But I also know that sometimes those, the data gives, just especially when numbers are average numbers, it doesn't necessarily show, it tells just a story of the average, but it doesn't tell necessarily the right full picture of what's going on. And so for that reason, I would appreciate it if there's, actually if I could see more of the spread between those that, that had lower than that average and some that went above that average, I would, that information would actually be very interesting to me. I guess I can use this example for why, why that concerns me. Having a daughter, and now you have to remind me, was it SAT scores that used to be the thing that would be there and they judged schools on? So my daughter attended high school in Davis County whose scores on average were the lowest in, in the district, but yet if you looked at her score, it was right up there and she was very competitive. But so people were always very concerned that they'd look at the school and say, "The school is no good because, you know, look at our scores." But so because average numbers came, it never told the story that the school actually was doing an excellent job of teaching students, but it, but the number of children that were struggling for other reasons outweighed. And so it gave that high school not, not necessarily the credit it deserved for the good work it was doing for its exceptional students. And so I, so I know that the, the top part is kind of on that average is, is also missed by taking an average, but I also know then it's hard, we make ourselves feel maybe a little bit better because the average looks better, but it doesn't tell the story about some of the schools and what they're dealing with. And that always concerns me, but you know, I appreciate the things that you're saying about the assessment and, and those kind of things because that's where those will come. I just always think that, that image of, of making sure we're equitable and not just equal is so important to me that, that sometimes our funding needs to be looked at to get more to those areas that are struggling. And one other question that I, well, one question that I had for you is on the spread when a student received an I, and I'm assuming students that maybe ceased to participate in, that were not showing up, appearing any longer online, that they were given an I, was, is that or did a teacher maybe make a decision to give them a different grade or how was that done when someone stopped appearing?
We didn't prescribe that at the district level. My assumption is that most teachers would likely consider that incomplete learning and it would have been awarded an I grade.
And so for the average grade, is an I given some kind of a score? Or are those students that received Is taken out of what the average score was?
So the, the letter grades would have calculated into the grade point average. That's the only place where they would have averaged in, but we purposefully exempted those I letter grades from the grade point average calculation for both the student and the aggregate data that I shared at the district level. So in other words, if I got an I, it's not going to affect my cumulative GPA that's listed on my report card.
But so then the average score that, that you gave us, those numbers also don't show the, it doesn't appear that the Is were then included in what that picture looks?
That's right. That's why there was such a big bump in the grade point average during fourth term.
Okay. And one, just one final thing if you don't mind. I, I just wonder, in my own neighborhood, and I said this last time, that, that I think some of the solution is not just going to be expecting education, family to step up, but that there's more things in the community and, and other situations that we're going to deal with this. And even in my own neighborhood, we're right now talking about whether there are ways that we can volunteer to help, and, and that might mean taking care of carpooling where a family can't get their child to school or those kind of things. But we even have some discussion in my neighborhood about, some of us have the abilities to help someone with math and how could we do that? And I just wonder, as we're addressing the learning gaps, if there's a way that groups could access and work with teachers to say, "I don't have that student, but I'm willing to help."
I love that commitment. I love that here in Davis County, our schools are still community schools and that the willingness to assist is there. We have great volunteerism and our schools are open to volunteers. They need to wear masks and they need to follow the protocols and procedures that we have. The best thing that an interested individual could do is reach out to the teachers in those classrooms and find out what they need.
And I, I expect that art discussion has more to do about those days when they're home and not having the teacher and, and being able to use that time to help with, because a parent's not there, able to help with that situation. So it's probably more in the remote day that we would be looking at.
Wonderful. Our, our students will need support on those days as well. Thank you.
Mr. Akersley?
Dr. Toon, my question is concerning math. Let me take this off. Question is concerning math. I get to teach seventh grade math. That's about as high as I could go and be able to teach it.
It's still wonderful. We love seventh grade math, too.
What I have found is that it's, it's just hard enough that they have, if they struggle with it, they, they struggle with doing their homework. And, and so being with them constantly and showing them how to do it, I have found to be very helpful. With the, the way we're opening school where for the, the secondary schools, that would mean that a teacher would only have their students once during the week, and if, if that once is a, is a Monday, will they be not seeing those students more than the students that come the rest of the week? Have we looked at that schedule to see if we can make that more?
So I can, I can address the, the scheduling question. On, on the A-day, so a lot of times we think about the alternating day, we call it A-day, B-day, but that can be confused by our secondary schools that have A-day classes on letter periods one through four and B-day classes. So group one, which is our A to K last-name students, and group two will alternate in, in and out of school. On the weeks when there's Monday holiday, like a Labor Day week, right? The students would, the students who are in the first part of the alphabet would not have an in-person class for their A-day classes. So periods one through four or one through five if they're on a ten-period block. So that happens in, we, we published a four-week calendar that shows the alternating day and we are committed to continually assessing the, our, our schedule. The first week of school doesn't have a Monday and the week of Labor Day does not have a Monday. The first week of school, we have modified it so that that Friday is, is the makeup, basically makeup for that A-day that those students miss. So in the course of the, the weeks, we publish that, that lack of an A-day class does happen one time and that happens during the week of Labor Day. Our, our sense on that is that the Friday, first of all, the, the weekly rotation, the ability for students and families to know which day is my day and am I supposed to go to school or am I supposed to stay home? We want to retain as much consistency in that as possible. And also those Fridays will become critical days for, for our teachers to connect with individuals and small groups on their remote, any interventions that they might need throughout the week and also to prepare resources, materials and things like that for their work. So that's, that's the nature of the, of the Friday and how it interfaces. That does happen one time during Labor Day week and we'll continually reassess any future opportunities that, you know, that, where we might have an interruption in learning that causes a significant imposition on one particular group of students.
And the second question, thank you for that. Second question is math, little different than other subjects in that as we're presenting concepts daily to students, it's very helpful for the teacher to be presenting that to them face-to-face and getting kind of an idea of whether or not they're, they're getting it or not. So now, even on a regular week, the teacher in the secondary school system is only going to be seeing them once a week. And I'm just interested, just maybe curious, how are our math teachers going to keep presenting concepts to them that will keep them moving through the subjects that they're supposed to learn that year in, in math?
I, I don't know that I have a full answer to that question, but I'll tell you what I'll do. I will send to you the math-specific guidelines that I have right here. I didn't include the math one in your packet, I included the social studies one. I'll share this with you as, as a preliminary document. And then I think the best thing would be to do is to see what our, our teachers are doing within the first week or two of school and then provide a report at that point. Is that okay?
Oh, yeah. It's just.
Because right now I can, I can tell you what we plan to do, but until we see what our amazing teachers can pull off, my guess is that we're gonna, that our minds are going to be blown at their capacity to be able to reach out to those students just because of the thoughtful, creative and persistent nature that this group of math teachers has.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask you a few questions, Dr. Toon?
You bet.
We talk a lot about blended learning in our home.
Um, we talk a lot about blended learning in our home. So a couple of things we've been. Well, especially when I looked at the social studies, um, guidelines, so the more specific, that was really helpful to see that. Thanks for sending a individualized one. Um, how, when, when blended learning, when blended. When blended learning happens, it can be often really easy to. Include like one and a half times as much content as, as in a regular class. What, is there a way to help teachers know how, about how much content should be in a week? I, I didn't, maybe it would be helpful for them to be able to see lesson plans. I love the idea of the videos that you've done. Of teachers, you know, sharing what, how they're going to adapt to, to things. How are they going to know about how much content, you know, should be happening?
It's a great question. Um, the, the expectation is that we kind of have communicated. Loosely to our schools is that the remote learning day should incorporate approximately three to four hours of time, of active time that the students, when they're offsite. Um, that'll be broken up differently across different classes based on, on the need of the class. Some classes require more, some classes require less. But teachers will need to adjust content level expectations. Um, the, the, you'll hear and read throughout these curriculum documents, the phrases priority standards, things like that. Are, we're reiterating those constantly because we need to really get to the heart. What are the most important essential concepts that students really need in order to, to move forward? And it's almost, and I, I don't like the word triage because it means that we're leaving critical things aside. But it's a real focus on those priorities and that will happen naturally, I think, but we do need to be prescriptive about it. So the desk standards, which are a kind of a, there, there's a state core which we're required to teach. The desk standards, which provides a, a narrow focus. And then the teachers will also be receiving communication about what those priority standards are. Now they'll come in a variety of different ways depending on the content area. Then the other thing that we have is the, the benefit and opportunity of retaining. Our, our teacher teams. So within a secondary school, the alternating day schedule still retains time for those. For the math team and the social studies team and the English team and the CTE team to gather, to, to talk to each other to say, hey, I'm, I'm in this area. And I, I'd like to go here. And one teacher might say, well, I've, I've actually thought about going a different direction. That, that opportunity for teachers to collaborate and talk to each other, which typically is on our late start Tuesdays in, in our high schools. And on our early out days on Fridays, we'll still retain that time on our Fridays for teachers and grade level teams to work together. To kind of hash out those local decisions at their school level.
Yeah. Um, and then also with blended learning. It can be really easy to have it be like two separate classes, like the in-face class and the remote class.
Right.
So that students almost feel like they have two classes. What, maybe more my question, question is. You know, what kind of training have teachers have had on how to blend those two so that they're supporting each other? And what kind of training will they get to? This is a brand new way of, of teaching. This is completely new for many, many teachers.
It's a great question. I don't have a complete answer on that one right now in terms of the training that's already happened. In the context of kind of the content flow and those priority standards that we talked about. And how to deliver those in a way that's cohesive so that it's not disjointed in person and then something completely unrelated on my remote days. Canvas is going to be critical to that and our secondary teams have been doing and training on Canvas for a long time. Um, our elementary teams had a, a full day training in May during the period of remote closure. And they had optional trainings throughout the summer that they could jump in on like a, it was kind of like a webinar approach. And then we have, uh, training in place tomorrow when our teachers come back on contract tomorrow. A half a day training that's going to be led in the elementary schools by the, by the principals about just this. How do we use the tool to create a cohesive learning sequence, um, for our students? And then we'll just continually assess and meet those training needs as we go. The videos will be an, an essential component of that too, to just kind of see. Here's an exemplary teacher. In fact, the one I'm thinking of, um, when the videos are published, I'll, I'll send you the link. Our K three teacher really specifically in her video outlines, here's how I'm going to tie in the remote learning stuff with the in-person learning stuff. And she just does a really nice job of explaining that sequence. And then, you know, the, the effort then is to just get our teachers. To be where that's possible, to have the tools that they need to do it and then the time to implement it.
One, one thing, Ms. Tanner, that, that it's, uh, well to note is. We're, we're trying to, um, shift to a ninety-two site focus. Um, because of the pandemic where, um, for the past four years, this has been a priority for us. But it's been one that, that we didn't, uh, purposefully dictate pace, uh, from the district office. Uh, the pace has been, uh, set by training level. Um, but it's, it's been, uh, per, uh, site-based. Uh, decision in terms of principals assessing where their faculty was at. What level of, uh, adoption, what level of expertise, uh, what level of capacity they had. To move their staff. So we're going to see a continued disparity from school to school. Uh, but you know, we're trying to, uh, uh, due to pandemic circumstances. Uh, put everybody at a certain level to start, if that makes sense. So, um, we'll continue to, uh, take best practice. And, and infuse that across the district, which we've done, you know, the, the, uh, co-collaboration. Between buildings has been immense the past four years in terms of, uh, ta, teams going to different schools. And seeing what, what, uh, they intend to initiate in terms of training and adopt and so forth. So, you know, that's not going to cease because we're in a pandemic. It just has to be adjusted to, to fit the, the. The, you know, the safety measures and so forth. So, so some of that, like Dr. Toon says, is, is difficult to measure. In terms of our preparation, um, but, um, the exposure across the board to, to Canvas. And at least the scaffolding of personalized approach, blended learning is, is, is well. Invested across the system, I think.
Can I, that's, that's really good. Thank you. Can I ask one more question? Or maybe it's more of a recommendation. I did get a lot of feedback about frustration of not being able to get. Feedback from the teacher or connection with the teacher. And I think these poor teachers were doing the best they could in the spring to try and respond to. Some of them, hundreds of students. I'm wondering if teachers could say, you know, I will. Get back to you within one week or I will get back to you within forty-eight hours. Just so students and or parents know, okay, they, they know they've gotten my message. But it's not realistic for them to be able to get back within the hour, you know, just sort of a realistic, um, expectation. That could be sent out by, by teacher. I, I don't know. I'm just throwing it out.
We'll, we'll attend to that. One of the solutions to that is the forty-eight hour turnaround, uh, structurally speaking and face to face. So, so that's going to solve a lot of that.
That's true.
There's also a component of office hours. I thought that was when I overviewed that social studies thing. That's one of the recommendations for those Friday times is for a teacher to have set office hours where a student could log in and ask questions directly.
And I, we were talking about this in our house too, about that. And sometimes kids just.
It's not the right time.
That doesn't work. Yeah. They want to know when they, when you're going to get back to them, you know?
Yeah. But I think that's important for, I think that was one of the overwhelming things for teachers in the spring is. If you're getting emails, you know, at midnight and kids are expecting an answer. So our teachers, as an ongoing solution, have got to define. What their personal response is going to be so students have a clear expectation of what's.
And maybe it's a week, you know, maybe that's the most reasonable. I don't know. They're, they're going to have to figure that out at a school level.
But yeah, I, I agree that if they could set out those expectations at the beginning. And, um, if parents can see those as well as the student, then they won't panic and say, she didn't get it. She didn't get it. Or he didn't get my message. But, but the alternating schedule should really help with that. But, um, I think parents and the students would feel better if they knew that, cause it, cause sometimes they just don't think about, oh. Gosh, I'm the only one in the class. No, there's thirty others in the class and they're just, they're just impatient. So frustrated, so.
One of the, um, aspects of the instruction that will happen in that face-to-face environment, you'll see it in the guidance documents as well. Is to that procedural instruction. So because teachers are going to see their students right at the beginning of the school year. And, you know, every other day or once a week, depending on the secondaries, elementaries, um, they'll teach things like, here's how we want you to submit your assignments digitally. And if that doesn't work and one student's not getting it, they'll have an opportunity to remediate that with the student next time they see them. Here's how we're going to. Here's how you log into that particular website. I know that some of those technical challenges were really kind of frustrating for a group of people in the spring. Also things like, here's what you do when you have a question. Here's how you can reach me. Those, we're really kind of hanging our hat and super. Um, grateful for the opportunity we have to open our schools because a full remote closure presents some of those problems that we can overcome. When we meet those students to teach those procedural, classroom procedural kinds of things, which I think were kind of a source of frustration. And some of those communication things too, that, that kind of reared their head a little bit in the spring.
Ms. Stevenson.
I had the opportunity today to visit an elementary, um, school that they, all the teachers were there taking Canvas instruction. And, um, it was fun to watch them. They were putting together modules and lessons and, and talking amongst themselves. And something that they didn't have the benefit of last spring. So I think we need to realize that. They're coming into this quite a bit more prepared and, uh, will be, will be there for us. And then let's not forget the Friday opportunities they have of making appointments and, and going in too. Um, they won't have to wait a whole week for a, a reply. Also those teachers were, um. Uh, meeting at the end of the day to put together their open house videos since there's not back to school. So they were all doing a little ten to fifteen minute open house. So I looked at those teachers and thought, wow, you know? They have a lot on their plate and they are giving it their best. So, um, kudos to, to those. I love that whoever, um, I guess it was you Logan that put together this assessing and addressing learning gaps. But this unfinished learning, um, there was a statement in there that was always my mantra as a teacher. And it was assessments should not require excessive time to administer, nor should they result in excessive pullout remediation. Which could interrupt instruction. Um, teachers are good at what they do. They're able to assess quickly and, um, know where those kids are. Um, I did have one question just on Acadians. Um, we did Acadians, uh, or Dibbles K through six, and then we went to just K through three. But I noticed down here it says K through six. So that's available for Acadians, uh, K through six.
Yeah, um, if you allow me to just, uh, give credit where credit do, Ms. Monalais is actually the author of this document. So.
It was well written.
Thank you. I, I will relay your gratitude to her for that. Um, and the, in answer to your question, K three Acadients is required by the state. K six is available to all of our schools at school choice. So every school has a minimum compliance of K three. But they can add on those four through six if they wish.
Okay. And it says that there's option for remote administration of that. Is that true that there is a remote administration that's?
That is, that is true.
Crazy.
Yep. We, we haven't done it yet. So I'll let you know how it goes.
Yeah, cause I just tried to picture how that would go after giving that so many times. So.
Mr. Akersley.
I can see something happening, um, at the beginning of school and just wondering how well prepared we are for that. And that is, um, that a, a student may be assigned to come on Monday or Wednesday or Tuesday and Thursday. And the Monday, Wednesday assignment that's given to them is absolutely impossible for them. Or very difficult for them to work. And the Tuesday, Thursday would work for them much better. Are the schools going to be working and helping people get on the schedule that works best for them? Or is that just going to be?
No, absolutely. We're allowing schools to give that consideration to the students, um, with the criteria that they would need to. If they made that change, it would pertain to all the students in that family. Um, which means they would need to work with the schools, like if there's an elementary school and a junior high that need to make that happen. And then the other thing is that it's documented in our system so we can adjust and make sure we know that, that in our system, the attendance records accurately reflect. When the student should be in school. And that we're asking schools also to ensure that the school or that the, that the group size doesn't get out of balance. Because we would lose the benefit of physical distancing if a large, if two thirds of the school was showing up on Monday and Wednesday. And only one third was showing up on Tuesday and Thursday. So as long as schools are balancing that out and, and meeting, they're working really hard to meet the needs of families on that schedule.
Ms. Cook, may I ask you a question? You, you made reference to the, the DSD hybrid guidance elementary document going to be going out.
This document will go to teachers.
It's going to teachers, administrators. We hadn't anticipated sending it to the community, but we certainly can. We can post it with the COVID resources on the webpage as well.
Yeah, I, I would be able to, I think.
Because just it's, it's a lot to.
It's a lot of teacher ease.
Yeah, but I think obviously at the school level, they're, they're going to get that information.
In multiple ways. So we make sure, make sure that it gets to the end of the row.
Yeah. And I would just, um, make a comment that, um, I've, I've had conversations with some other people in other districts. And, um, we're way ahead because of the staff members that we have, administrative level that we have. There are some that are, um, I mean, even one, in one situation in a relatively large district across the Wasatch front. You know, a teacher said, we were supposed to get trained this summer, but they ran out of time. So our faculty never got trained. You know, this is a relationship to devices and some different things. Um, but I think it, I, I don't think any, any of you. Um, are like one hundred percent comfortable that we've done enough. I think you've, uh, Dr. Toon, you've alluded to the fact, you know, once, once we kick into gear on August twenty-fifth. And we're going to learn a lot of things at that time. Ms. Stevenson made that comment today as we were at the, uh, new teacher orientation with the secondary teachers. You know, and, um, uh, I think that that's, that's so true. Things that we can share, things that we learn. Um, I think some of the questions that came up tonight are excellent questions in regards to. It just another thing to think about, you know, and maybe, maybe ways that we can, that we can do what we're doing even better. But bottom line is since last, even, even as we closed last March, our people were far ahead of a lot of other districts. And some of us have contact with other districts and we understand that because of the feedback that we got. And, um, that put us in a lot better position. Um, I don't feel we're doing catch-up. I think that we're in a position where we have, uh, allowed ourselves and allowed our teachers a chance. A lot better chance to be successful, even as they struggle with a lot of the things that's going to happen. And so I, I think that that will just, I think that will filter down, uh, in, into our homes as well. As people see the devotion that our teachers have at the level, you know, the school level. So thank you very, very much. Ms. Monford, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just had a question. Um, this document is amazing and the thing I really appreciate about this STEM report. Is it reflects our continued commitment. And I think that Mr. Grover mentioned that we're going to do this again in a year. And, and that's where the assessment comes in when we demonstrate that we have high expectations and that we're moving forward. One of my favorite pages in here is where it talks about our successes with minority students in STEM. I just wondered, Mr. Grover, could you speak to some of the things that you think may have influenced that huge increase in minority achievement and special ed? In addition to the, the access for females that you pointed out?
Yeah, I think, um, a lot of the changes that have happened and that have come from, like I said, uh, Mr. Welk's team. And their ability to increase offerings. And so not only increase offerings, but when you can increase opportunity at the school. And then that opportunity, um, becomes where it's kind of normalized, where, um, that kind of brings in, um, the whole population. And so I think a lot of times when we have programs that, um, end up being very, I wouldn't say elitist, but that, that they, they're hard to get into. That causes roadblocks to our minority students and students, um, from a variety of backgrounds to be able to get into those. And so our goal, um, in STEM really is to try to produce enough opportunity that it prevents roadblocks to any students from getting in. So, um, you know, when you do that, you allow students that, um, you know, are in a specialized situation or, uh, from minority backgrounds or any of those. It becomes that, that, you know, the freeway is open and anybody can get to it if you can provide enough equitable access across the whole system. Which really is, um, the underlying backbone of doing the data analysis so that we can really see. Where everything is happening around the district.
where everything is happening around the district. And then from our level, be able to identify areas of inequity and then kind of attack those and come at them, so that, so that instead of having a very narrow route that only a few people can get through, you know, a very wide road that anyone can get through.
Great. Thank you. Then my other question was for Dr. Toon, just, I've had a lot of patrons that are very concerned about the competitiveness as their kids are looking at higher ed in the future and recognizing that it's a, a countrywide issue. So we're on a fairly level playing field, but still some inequities. Do you feel like the change in our AP test counts was related to like the registration fee process the year that was different where they had to pay earlier? Or do you feel like it was kids who registered and then chose not to take the test because they didn't feel prepared after COVID or they didn't feel comfortable with the test administration digitally?
So I can hypothesize only on this one. Uh, but I think it's probably a combination of three things, the two that you identified. And then also, we had a very small number of students who had technical difficulties on the day of the test. AP, the College Board offered, uh, a makeup test day. And, and almost all of our students took advantage of that, but there were a handful that did not. So the, the number of our tests taken dropped likely because of those three things. We're working very hard and Ms. Sauve has been working with the schools almost non-stop to overcome that first one, the, the registration barrier.
The early VP.
That's one that with, with procedures and with communication, we feel like we can address that one completely.
Great.
Well, one other thing too, that we, we haven't, uh, accumulated the full data on is, you know, we'll have to measure it against also concurrent achievement in terms of, you know.
Was there a shift?
Well, yeah, we haven't seen that necessarily. We've been keeping pace with steady increase in both concurrent edging out AP a little bit in terms of speed of increase. But I think that will be something we'll need to analyze as well.
We'll have access to statewide comparison data as well. And it will be informative to us to know, um, if the drop was experienced uniquely here in Davis or if it was experienced statewide. That'll help us kind of troubleshoot and get to the bottom of where we are on that.
Okay, great. And then I just wanted to thank, um, Ms. Robbins for her presentation. I think the board really appreciates that. That was kind of driven by some public comment that we had. So if there's other board members that have questions before we move on, I want to make sure we have an opportunity to discuss that. But I think for me, that really demonstrated kind of the underlying focus on those critical skills in social studies. So thank you for that.
Any other comments? In relationship to bonuses, uh, Mr. Zabakan was under his time, you were over.
Yeah, that happens every time. That's just how it goes. Thank you.
We're gonna turn the time to Mr. Christensen and Ms. Gronnester for an update on our SEL and a little bit about timeline. Thank you for being with us.
School Board President and Board Members, it's good to be with you. And, uh, we're excited to share our updates and our timeline on SEL. Uh, before I turn the time over to Ms. Gronnester and her team, Ms. Buckway and, uh, Mr. Healy, just a couple of things I wanted to, to mention. To rebuild thriving schools, we need to prioritize safe, supportive, culturally sustaining and equitable learning environments that promote the social and emotional competencies of both students and adults. I think a year ago, I don't know if any of us thought we'd be in this position. How timely it is that we've gone ahead with this implementation process. The work that Kathleen, uh, Ms. Gronnester and her team have done, uh, this last year in staying on pace and following the district's strategic plan on building an inclusive culture and a safe and supportive culture, I think we're well on our way to staying on pace. However, when I say timely, given the traumatic events, I think the tools that they put together, and they'll go through this in their presentation, I think are, are very important in terms of addressing both, uh, student need, teacher need, and leadership need in, in a framework. And I think they've done that. And so I wanted to commend them for that and, uh, wanted to turn some time over, uh, to them right now. And we'll certainly have questions afterward. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. President Robinson, Vice President Mumford, and members of the board, we are so delighted to be here and share with you some of the great things that we're doing, um, and kind of update you where we were a year ago, where we are now, and where we're headed. So, all right, Timothy, I don't see that this is working. Oh, look at that. Just takes the magic touch. So in our implementation of social-emotional learning, we're now in year two of our three-year plan. I want to just let you know that there's more than me. I'm so excited. I want to introduce a small team we have. And if they'd come up forward and sit on either side, that'd be helpful, cause then if there's questions, then they can address those. So I want to introduce Devon Healy on my left, on your right, and Jessica Buckway. And they're both on the SEL team. And we also have, of course, we use all of those folks in Student Services that work with us as well, but these folks have some dedicated time to working with SEL. And, um, I'm just delighted to have some other people to, to share, because we have a lot that we've been working on and we've got a long ways to go and we're excited to do the work. So we're gonna start off practicing what we're asking all of our school leaders to do, and that is the three, uh, practices, signature practices of adult learning for social-emotional learning. The first one is doing a, a, some sort of a welcome to get you in the moment. So because we've been sitting a long time and my watch told me at least twice to stand up, would you stand up as you think about this question? Today I am feeling. All of you, stand up. Everybody needs a break. Today I am feeling. The idea that we recognize emotion is important. So who'd like to volunteer? Today I am feeling what?
Which one of us?
Both of you. One and the other.
Well, I'm feeling tired because the last two mornings I've been to a seven o'clock meeting, but I have no idea why.
Cheering.
I've been going to those seven o'clock meetings. Can they start at eight? But anyway, I am feeling tired.
Thank you.
I'll echo. I'm feeling a little tired from, uh, hundreds of hundreds of emails trying to answer those and that kind of thing. But, but right now, this very moment, I am feeling impressed with the outstanding work that has been done. And I want to thank all our presenters, you guys included, for the amazing work that has been done. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Happy.
Happy. Great. Happy, tired, um?
Impressed?
Impressed? Anything else?
Good.
Good. How about the audience? Oh, come on. Grateful.
Exhausted.
Exhausted. Oh, Linda, I watched that and I thought, you guys have to be exhausted. Anybody else?
Excited.
Excited. First of the school year, right? Thank you all, I appreciate that. Welcome to have a seat. That is one way we can just introduce SEL, is that we can have an adult learning setting, we can recognize emotion and that it's important and we value it. Um, a year ago, we convened and had our district symposium and we designed our plan based off of our vision statement. So just as a reminder, here's our vision statement that employees, and remember, that's key, that that was first, employees and students acquire and effectively apply personal and social attitudes, behaviors, and skills necessary to lead happy and fulfilling lives. From that, we wanted to look at how SEL then supports the Davis Strategic Plan, and it's all around culture. So as you can see on this diagram, that the culture encircles all of those things that we're about with our strategic plan. And then we look at the SEL framework and it aligns directly with that framework, which we have adopted, um, from Castle with their five competencies. Just as a reminder, here are those five competencies, again, supporting the Davis District Culture. Those are the kinds of skills that we can actually teach and practice, um, in our schools and as, as students and as adults. So why SEL, especially right now? So we feel that SEL can help students and teachers adapt to new environments, manage new expectations, and foster a sense of belonging. Those are three things that we feel going into the school year are gonna be very important for all. Our three-year implementation plan, uh, is in four focus areas. Last year, in our first year, we just focused on areas one and two. And those areas are the foundational support and strength in adult SEL. This year, and then moving forward, we're looking to, um, all four areas and will implement as schools and/or these district departments or individuals are ready to move, um, forward. So let's just go through what those four areas are. So the first focus area, building capacity and, and knowledge and really gaining ownership. We also looked at that as a district SEL plan, which we have a three-year plan. We have a district advisory team. And then we've asked schools to do the same thing with their school improvement plan, that they would have an SEL plan and their own SEL team. Then we're also looking at parent involvement and outreach as well as community support. The second area, which we spent quite a bit of time with last year, was focusing on adult SEL. But we really wanted to make sure that that is something that we don't say, oh, well, we did it last year. No, it's ongoing. We have to continue to do that as we, as we have new employees or we have new people coming, uh, into new positions. It's just something we have to continue to always do. Remember that as adults, how we, um, manage our emotions, um, sets the model for how students and others around us also understand how they can take care of themselves. The third area of focus is, is fairly new for us this year. Um, we're, we're working into moving more towards students. So we've embedded social-emotional practices in the classroom that will be helpful for all students and all teachers. And we have a toolkit that we've been working on for a year that we, uh, we're gonna show you in a minute on the website, that have these trauma-sensitive practices, restorative practices, all aligned with specific SEL strategies that every teacher can do in any classroom setting. The toolkit has, is done by grade bands. So we have it by the five, um, Castle competencies in grade bands pre-K through two, three through six, seven, nine, and 10, 12. Here's an example out of the toolkit of a strategy that every teacher could do. Um, and this is in the area, one of the categories, five competencies, this is relationship skills. And I thought this one is, was really a good example for secondary. Have students review social media posts and discuss how those posts impact positive and negative relationships. A little timely, don't you think?
Very relevant.
And very relevant, right? But is that something that you can see a secondary teacher, really in any content area, would be able to have that kind of a conversation? Some content lends itself maybe to that example better than others, but, but it's still, um, something that, that, that can be done. In elementary, um, here's an example. It gives students a listening task. Describe a process or task and have students turn to a partner and explain what they heard. So very simple kinds of strategies that promote social-emotional learning. Here's an example in social awareness. In elementary, morning meetings can be used to involve students in sharing and recognizing others who have different experiences, which develops empathy and appreciation for differences and similarities. And in secondary, have students work together in groups to identify an issue within the broader community and write a persuasive letter to a leader that addresses the issue. We did a, a quick survey and we asked, um, schools to let us know if they were intending to do direct instruction. So what we've just shown you from the toolkit are embedded strategies. And then the next step is actual direct instruction of lessons, social-emotional learning lessons. Um, 79% of our elementary schools have a goal for direct instruction. Now, that was last year when they wrote their school improvement plan. As things move into the school year, um, we'll support them in whatever, whatever needs they have with that direct instruction. As you can see, the, those, uh, we asked them what curriculum they plan to use. We want to make sure that it's embedded appropriately and everything at this point, um, we feel very comfortable with. 76% of our junior high schools have also got a plan to do some direct instruction. And 60% of our high schools are planning to do direct instruction. Our fourth focus area then is the continuous improvement, where we use data to identify and, um, opportunities for improvement, also be able to reflect it on what's working, what's not working, and plan for those school-wide goals as we move into this next school year. In that school improvement plan, um, we've asked, uh, all of our schools to practice our SEL walkthrough tool this year. Just do it with us once, we, we need some feedback on it. Um, and that tool includes student voice, staff survey, uh, the school climate survey also includes parent input, as well as school data, observation data, and self-assessment. So these are the four areas that we're looking at for, um, measuring school, um, SEL. Again, we're not doing any individual level, it's all at a school level. So we're looking at the school climate survey, which we're working with, um, uh, Janil's group, um, I have to call her Ms. Monalay, she's Janil, I went to elementary school with her. Um, Janil's group in designing the climate survey to have some reflective questions around SEL. Um, we're working to make that happen fairly quickly. And then our SEL school self-assessment, a walkthrough tool designed by, um, Devon Healy. And we have then the collaborative observation, where we're going to have schools work, um, together and observe each other so that they can give, um, feedback about what's working or what they're doing and have some collaboration between schools. And then as well as school-level data, which right now is usually gonna be your school office referrals. Here's just a little snippet of the student voice piece. This is all the questions that we're looking at for the self-assessment. So as a school would pull some, some students together and, um, ask them these questions, the student responses then, there's no, there's no right or wrong, they're just making observation. And then this will guide the school self-assessment. So they'll kind of listen to the student voice and go, oh, oh, I didn't know that. Or hey, that's good information. So then as they do their own self-assessment, they'll have that student voice as input. So what we've got then is this walkthrough tool. We'd like all schools who are going to use it as a benchmark, uh, uh, data this year to administer it sometime during the school year. If they're actually gonna look at growth, we like them to administer it in the fall and then again in the spring. It's not very long. And it's something that is just a, it's a, it's a tool to use ongoing and to help guide what they're doing in their building. So now, as part of that, three signature practices, this is an engagement strategy. So what I'd like you to do is just, because you can't really get together and talk, but what is your number one concern about reopening school? And you can only have one. What's your number one concern?
Staying open.
Staying open. Good. What else?
Assessing the kids. She went around.
Okay, assessing the kids.
I think lower-end economic situations and older students being put online so that they can watch younger students when they transfer work.
Thank you.
Keeping those safe who are vulnerable.
Yeah. You talking about staff and students?
Yes.
Yeah. Good. What else? Your number one concern?
So mine, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about whether, um, keeping people safe in one way and making them more vulnerable in other ways, especially those who are unattended.
Thank you.
My number one's already been said, but, um, I have a concern that an outbreak of a war in one of our special ed classes will close that whole group down. And how are we going to take care of, meet their, uh, AP hours and needs?
Dr. Toon, what's your number one concern?
Um, ensuring that, uh, we capitalize on the remote time that we have. Make sure that learning still happens during the time we don't see our kids face-to-face.
Yeah. Mr. Zabakan?
Having a joyous student.
Um, this has something to do with what you're talking about. And my number one concern was making sure we can keep the schools open. But, um, another concern that I've had that you're addressing is, um, um, the social-emotional learning piece of, um, since we're going alternating days, of, uh, students, um, going to school with a feeling like all of their friends are on the other schedule. Now, I don't have any friends on this schedule because all of their last names begin with another part of the alphabet. So that's another concern that I've had. And, you know, and in a way, I'm hoping that it will, uh, create new opportunities for them to make new friends. But I, yeah, but I do know a lot of students that are feeling that way.
Comfortable. Sure. All right, Superintendent, your last.
Uh, well, I, I think reintegration and how that's going to take place. I mean, we're coming off a three-month no school. And, uh, and then you, uh, put that with summer break. Uh, it's been a long time that the people have been in buildings and all, including our staff.
Very good. Thank you. So. We have created an SEL roadmap to reopening. This is all on our website. But these are some essential SEL strategies we've sent to all of our schools. We've been working with the teaching and learning department. So this has gone out, um, with the training that will take place tomorrow with elementaries and then secondaries through their content training that they're having. They're gonna be also exposed to these strategies. Here are the five things that we think are the most important.
Here are the five things that we think are the most important. These are also trauma-sensitive strategies, but first of all, structure. They need to have a clear structure with both the in-person and the online. Building relationships, focus on that relationship building first, and then build community. And building community, they can do it a couple of ways, a morning meeting or a check-in. And our secondaries, we have got a number of the junior highs that are doing check-ins, which I think is awesome, and most of our elementaries are looking at how to do the morning meetings and making that work. The next one is focus, and that is being able to let kids have that break, you know, whether it's the brain break or whether it's an activity, but something where they can refocus. And the last one is using our SEL teaching strategies so that they can embed that into their academic content daily and have those SEL approaches as they work through their academic content. We also think it's very important that our leaders in our buildings also use these adult learning strategies as they're working with the adults in their building to implement these three practices that we're actually doing today. We've also told our schools, we really think you need to think about as leaders, how do you put the culture of your staff at the center of your school opening? You need to think about that. Your school culture needs to be reflective of what your staff needs and thinking about staff, implementing then faculty and staff activities and strategies. And we've given them a couple of different activities that they can actually do, opening up school with their staff that are SEL. And then we want them to remember as educators that they've got to take care of themselves. This is a very stressful time for everybody. We've all been through a lot. We've all been trauma. I mean, we've all been through trauma in one way or another. Every family has been through that. So we need to remember that self-care is essential and that our parents and our families are also sharing those same concerns that our teachers have. And we also think that embedding those SEL practices into the classroom will be helpful for the students but also for the teachers, because as you embed that strategy, you're also very thoughtful about what you're doing, and you take a moment to reflect on your own practice. So thinking about what you've heard and learned today, what is your one big takeaway? And how will you use it?
Just more taking care of yourself.
Okay.
I was going to say the same thing. I need to remember to step back.
Yeah. Are you all taking care of yourselves?
Well, we've been so focused on taking care of everyone else.
Right.
Our constituents and others.
That's my point.
That we haven't taken time to take care of ourselves. I'm guessing for most of the board.
Yeah, that's my point.
I think the material that you've made available to schools is my big takeaway. It's impressive.
We're going to show you where to find it, so you can do a little exploring. So Timothy, if I want to get to the internet, I just, I got to put glasses on. Devon, you want to get in?
One thing, President, as we're going to that, it exemplifies the critical nature of continually the concept of the lifeboat and lifting a hand to take the hand that's in the lifeboat. And that's our continual challenge, is to make sure that what we have in the boat is extended too. You know, you look at Mr. Healy, for example. If you look back on the slide page, I have 20 on my handout where there's the four SEL measurements for school SEL. Mr. Healy, I know, comes to us from the state office as an expert in development of measuring MTSS, and then is what he's brought to the district in the past and continues to bring that is taking that measurement and then Ms. Cronister, Mr. Christiansen, I'm sure Ms. Buckway, she gets into the team, the ability to turn that around to make it valuable, that is really beneficial of the team and the targeted approach that they've taken is really what kind of comes out of that.
Thank you, and spot on. So just if you want to get any of these resources, things that we've sent to the schools, they're here on the SEL webpage. The teacher toolkit, which I just got to tell you, Jessica has edited that too many times. Appreciate that. But you can see it's designed elementary, junior high, and high school. Let me just click on elementary and just show you what it looks like, so you know how, if anybody has any questions or concerns. If we wanted to look at any of these files, I'll go to the first one, which is relationship skills. And so we've got the competencies. We've got indicators by grade bands, so that you're able to see what the students should be able to do in that particular competency area. And then we've got the embedded strategies. So, you know, have students practice saying, "Please, thank you and excuse me" when appropriate. Those are SEL kinds of things. So how we treat each other and how we respect our peers. And so you can see how those grade bands are all, all those strategies are just embedded into the teaching strategies. In the elementary, we were able to do it also by STEM and by humanities and also by, what was it? Oh, yeah, by healthy lifestyles. So we've got them also with specific kinds of strategies in those content groupings. And then we also have where it's all linked to the direct instruction. So a teacher doesn't have to go look. If they want to teach relationship skills in first grade, they can click on one of those lessons and it goes right to that lesson where we have the link. Some of these links are not, because Sanford Harmony's free, we're able to link to those lessons. The other content that people have chosen, we can't do that same link for them, but we just simply say, "Here are the units where you can find those lessons." And then we have, Near Pod is great. We've all got Near Pod, and that's K through 12. Pure Edge, the trainer that came in last year and did the adult SEL. These are the pieces for our students. So this is really nice. They kind of tell them what kind of brain breaks and what settings would be appropriate, what to do for arrival, what to do for coming in from recess, what to do for the afternoon slump. And then we've got all of these kinds of same things for our junior high and our high school as well. And then we wanted to just show you that we've got this roadmap to reopening, and I'm going to click on it right here. This has all the resources we were just telling you we've sent to the schools. So if we want to look at the teacher resources, administrator resources, they're all right here. If I wanted to go to teacher resources, then I can look at virtual learning resources, support for students, self-care, and there's also a teacher support group that Brad's team is doing. So just lots of things there that will support our teachers and our administrators and our students, and well, we've also got a page there for parents and for virtual learning. So with that, I'm just going to open it up to any questions.
Gerard?
I don't really have a question. I just wanted to say thank you for all the work that's been done. It's just so timely and so needed right now, but just appreciate all the work. Great.
Thank you for your support, too.
Mr. Eckerson?
Again, this is really good stuff, Ms. Cronster. Appreciate all that you're doing there. One thing that I'm looking for and want to ask about is, in our nation, the last, I don't know how long, four or five months, we've had a lot of racial upheaval, and that seems to be related to the social part of SEL. But I didn't see it a lot there. I heard you talk about it earlier on, and so I'm just wondering, are we prepared to teach our students, our faculty, everybody, the need for acceptance of people's differences, whether it be color or race or religion or whatever it might be, and to come together as a class and really care about each other in spite of the differences that we have with each other in our class?
I concur. I think that the equity piece is and should be delivered through SEL, and it's how we set up our relationship building with each other, and it's how we are inclusive with those that are around us, and it's how we recognize similarities and differences. I've been working with the Equity Department, and they are looking at our teacher, our embedded practices to see if there's some strengthening they can do around equity language. And we are open to working with them to making sure that we have all of those things in there that all teachers would be able to embed. We've also talked about separate lessons that the Equity Department is working on, and I think that is probably, will be based on what we call like a tier-two intervention at this point. So if there is a need recognized by a school or a classroom or administrator, that those lessons could be delivered that way as well.
And then a follow-up question was, considering our strategic plan, there is nowhere on that plan for equity. It's not mentioned, just as you look at the face of the plan. But I'm wondering if, just like SEL, equity would be included in the culture part of our strategic plan, because it affects every single thing that we do in the district.
I believe it is part of the culture. I'm not sure the actual language of that, but I do think that that's where it belongs. It fits very well, and that's where we would focus on it being there.
Ms. Phipps?
So I just wanted to share an aha thing. Just last month was participating, well, I guess it was actually into this month. It's been a long month, a long year.
It's still March, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, but I was involved with the National PTA Convention, and it was all a virtual convention and had some excellent, it was interesting to just see how much SEL is a part of the discussion nationwide and to see where we are compared to where others are in that. But just an aha moment I had during that is, as we talked about self-care and those kind of things, and I've been trying to do better myself, and so I did just come from a getaway, because I needed to get away and let those things go that I couldn't do anything about. But they pointed out that adults are really bad about expressing all of their emotions to children. So you don't really, your children find out you're angry by the way you physically do things, but we don't feel like it's all right to say to a child, "I'm just really angry right now." And then helping them to see, what do I do when I have that honest emotion, or "I feel scared right now," or "I'm nervous." We, and, you know, I just hope that our teachers, as they come back and as they deal with students that are afraid or frustrated because they're not with their friends, that we as adults can do a better job of saying, "That's how I'm feeling as well," and then help them understand, "How do I deal with that? When I'm feeling angry, what's the appropriate way?" Rather than to dismiss that we have negative feelings and we only promote that if I share that I feel angry right now, that's somehow less an adult thing to do. But the truth is, is we acknowledge all of our emotions, and so I appreciate that first question that you had of how are you feeling, because I just think it's an important thing that as our teachers go back, that it's all right, that we as adults, and, you know, and people are frustrated about a lot of things, and it's all right to be frustrated and express that frustration, but then helping them understand now what we do in a positive way is a good thing.
Thank you. Anything else?
Ms. Tanner?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Healy. I'm just curious, and maybe you haven't done any measurement on this, but Ms. Cronster talked about embedded teaching and direct teaching. Is one more successful than the other, or do certain age groups respond better to, I think you're, it sounds like you do educational measurement and stuff, so I don't know if this is the right question for you, but just curious if there's any measurements that have been done on that.
I don't, not that I know of. I'm not familiar with any research on that specific component with SEL. One thing that we're trying to emphasize is that it can't just be a standalone piece, where you say, "At this time each week, we're going to explicitly teach our kids about social emotional learning competencies." That's certainly part of it, but it's got to be embedded so that they are getting that dosage that we want to see. Every day, they're seeing it modeled, the affective statements, and then it's explicitly taught, and then there are much higher likelihood of them generalizing those practices, so.
That's great. Thanks. If you want to look on the Castle website, it does have that data.
Around using the different strategies and that they need to be in tandem. You need to have your adult SEL in place. You need to have embedded strategies with your academic content, and then you need to provide direct instruction. So, and they do have some data, some research that demonstrates that.
One of the things, Board, that I want to, that has been such a benefit to the district and our team with Ms. Cronister, is her ability to embed herself in these providers, Castle, Pure Edge, and the relationships she's formed already is just, you know, we have unlimited resource because of that, and it's a good modeling practice in and of itself for our leaders and then, you know, right on down to students in terms of, you know, taking the initiative to really focus in on what we need and then build that relationship.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Very impressive. Appreciate what you're doing, and it's right into the reason we're here, to help kids. So we appreciate it.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
I'd like to turn some time to Superintendent Newey to introduce our next item.
President, thank you. I asked the President just to give me a second, as Rick and Mr. Astle, Mr. Best come up to the podium, ask them to prepare and kind of brief the Board, as well as the Directors, on our protocol and procedure in place for extracurricular participation in regard to activities. A lot of it's high school activities, association-mandated. However, we host the sites, we host the events, and we have specific protocol that Mr. Astle and Mr. Best have worked on with the high schools, and then they'll also, Mr. Best, I believe, will address junior highs as moving forward. So, Mr. Astle.
President Robinson, Robertson, sorry, Robinson, and Vice President Munford and Board members, we appreciate this opportunity. I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I realize that I am between you and supper. So we'll get through this quickly. I just appreciate that opportunity to just talk for a minute about our return-to-play protocol that we have, and as well as our guidelines to safely sponsor extracurricular activities in our junior highs and high schools. I added two pages in your booklet there today that you can, for your review. But we've spent a lot of time in preparation and training of our people. One thing we've required of all of our administrators, ADs, and coaches is for them to take the training COVID-19 coaches and administrators, which is provided by the National Federation of High Schools, and for them to get a completed certification in that area. We've also trained all of our administrators and coaches on the High School Activities Association's return-to-play guidelines, which we'll be following, as Superintendent Newey mentioned, we've followed that very closely. We also continue to check the temperatures of all of our athletes and coaches every day, as well as have them provide, you know, a symptoms form every day to make sure they're healthy before they come to practice and games and various things. This year, all spectators are going to be required to purchase tickets online. There'll be no ticket sales at our venues, and as they purchase those tickets, they're going to have to fill out a form called Spectator's Agreement Guidelines and Expectations before they can get a ticket. That'll take place at home and away games in all Region 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And so we've talked to those groups, and we're on the same page on that. Seating's going to be limited to the number that we can physically and socially distance and maintain that through a game, not to exceed 50% on outside venues and 25% on inside venues at any time. Masks are going to be required at all times for all spectators and players on sidelines, and it'll be at our facilities. The social and physical distance rules and guidelines take place at all spots inside our venue, at the concession stands, at restrooms. All those will be monitored very closely to make sure that, you know, that we're following that at all times. Our athletes, our managers, our coaches, our ADs, before they get on the bus to go to a different facility, they'll be temperature-checked, as well as they'll fill out that symptoms form again. And as they arrive at the facility, which they'll be participating that day, they'll receive a temperature check again before they're allowed to go into the building. And so we're just making sure that our people are healthy before we go into these facilities. Our coaches and our table help and others who'll be helping, you know, we're going to be required to, you know... we're going to be required to, you know, be masked and also observe all guidance. I mean, distancing guidelines and things at all times. Hand sanitizers provided on both sides of the field, on both sides of the court. As our athletes come off the floor, they'll have receive hand sanitizer as they come off and at all times. Also, they're required to bring their own water bottles and have them clearly marked. We've also experimented, a couple of our schools last week experimented with small water bottles that they were given individually. And those were disposed of immediately after they were to drink those at that time. Also, just the host school is responsible for all sanitation of all the areas before and after the event. And also, there'll be no handshaking before or after the games. We've, our coaches have been instructed to take their teams off the field as fast as they can after the game to avoid any social contact with spectators or students. Same with cheerleaders and all things. We'll get out of the field as safely as, as fast as we can. Any questions off that? Yes, Bridget.
When you said that it's going to be monitored even at the concession stands, who is going to do the monitoring? Is that going to be school staff or are we hiring?
We have school staff that have been hired to come and monitor those things. Like at the Northridge game that I attended on Friday, they were all in yellow vests. Their markings were very clear at the concession stands. They have marks. They have six feet. Same thing at the bathrooms, so that they're visual as well as we'll have people there to help positively remind them to follow the guidelines if they need to be.
Thank you.
Yes?
I wondered at the number of the 50% in the stadium because I'm assuming six feet means here, here and here. So I'm picturing those bleachers and trying to, that would, it would seem like it would be a lot less than a 50% attendance in a facility.
That's a great question. We thought and took that, thought about that at length. And like I said, we virtually come back to, there's not a perfect percentage. And so we virtually fell back to safety. What can we do safely to make sure that they are spread out safely? For some schools, that might be 30%. Another, it may be 40. 50 is the, they cannot go over 50%. And so every school facility is different. One school has five exits to their, maybe to their facility, another one maybe have one or two. And so all those things are taken in and we look at those and review those. And we have to make a decision on how we can safely do things.
Mr. Astle, if a family comes, then they can sit together. They don't have the distance.
They can. What we're doing is we have ushers at these games. We invite them to come down and we kind of give them an area which they can sit. They can sit together in families. But our coaches have done a very good job. Our administrators have also sent out letters instructing our parents, you know. In fact, there's a great, I'm just going to show you just quickly. One of the signs they had up at Northridge I thought was really impressive. It says, "We wear masks so they can play and we can watch let them play." And so I thought, you know, that's something we're just kind of use and encourage our fans. It was, I found it to be, the fans were very respectful. I think they did a very good job in keeping masks up and separating themselves. We could use some improvement in some areas, but mainly it was, and most players, it's very good.
Ms. Stevenson?
So the football game I went to Friday night, I went online, bought my ticket. How many, does each school determine how many tickets are being given or how?
Each school is given, yes, each school looks at their facility because they're all different. Number one size of bleachers.
And they decide the number.
Also, you know, exits in and out of the facility is a factor. When we have to get people in and out, you know, we have to keep them socially distanced. It was a difficult. All those things are taken into account.
And so do they decide how many the opposing team gets also? And then how many, because I noticed it was heavily on the one side.
It's going to be heavy on the home side. And we know that and it's going to be in all regions that way. And but every home visiting team will also give the home team, I mean, the visiting team, tickets for parents and some students.
I have to say, the bench in between, I felt like I was a good distant, you know, everybody left it. I sat with my family and there's a space there and a space behind me. And it was unfortunate that the bench, in front of that bench, were the only people in the whole stadium that didn't have masks on. But other than that, it was good.
You know, we talked, we've met today for an hour with our administrators again and reflected back on what took place on Friday night and what we did well and what we need to improve on. And the one thing that I was very impressed is with is that the announcer did a fabulous job in reminding students as well as parents to keep masks up. And I was pretty impressed how well he did. We had, he had a few we had to remind, but they were very good to put them on.
It was very well organized.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Astle?
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I just want to take a quick second and thank you guys for all you've done. You know, not just, you know, from March on, but specifically from the pandemic on. I know you guys get a lot, you know, delused with emails and phone calls and things of that nature. So thank you for all you do from the bottom of my heart. I've got three kids that went through Davis School District. And you know, with the work we do, you know, my supervisor, Belinda Cook, she's wonderful. I love working in the teaching and learning department. I love learning from our superintendency, being on that task force committee with Mr. Zerbakan and working with Dr. Too and everybody I'm proud to work for Davis School District. And I think that it starts with our school board and I appreciate what you guys do. Some of the questions that I'm sure you get, Mr. Astle answered a couple of those. But I've just compiled a couple of Q and A's that I've received a couple of emails and phone calls since March regarding what athletics looks like and what we're doing to protect their loved ones. As he mentioned, the forums that we, that we sent out. We created a COVID questionnaire that has 10 questions that we sent to schools. They copy that form, they make it their own. And then they use that and it also has a QR code. So the kids can, you could put 500 kids in there with cell phones. They just take a picture of that QR code, up come the 10 questions. I put my name, my grade level, my sport. Do I have any of the symptoms? My shortness of breath, unusual muscle soreness, coughing, those sorts of things. And a temperature check. And then our coaching staff in the junior highs and high schools look through that before practice. And if any of those questions are yes, then we excuse those student athletes to go home for the rest of the day and try again the next day. They don't need a doctor's note, but we encourage them to stay home so we don't, you know, we want to stop the spread. And it'll get tricky in the fall when flu season hits and whatnot. But we'll keep asking those questions on a daily basis. We have over 100,000 individual pieces of data from our schools. So schools are doing their job, asking those questions. And you know, it's the new now. It's, you have to plan that in your practices. If you have 120 kids on your football team, that's going to take a while. But the forums kind of, I call it the forum. But you know, that forum that we created and sent to schools has helped lessen that load. It's, we don't want to use a whole lot of trees and most of our kids have phones. So that, that helps it instantaneously. Those forums automatically load to each respective school and in an Excel sheet so they can look at those. And one thing that's helped well, that's worked well so far is if the health department has a kid that tests positive in our schools, they go it out to these schools and the schools have that information. This, you know, this kid was on the drill team or our soccer team or whatever the sport is, marching band. And they can immediately say, you know, here are the kids that were there and the dates that you want. Here are the questions that we looked at. And that's helped the health department, Mr. Hatch and his team to quickly identify, I need to talk to these 20 kids and see what the parameters were. Were they, you know, in a skilled position group, where they weren't, you know, away from these kids? Or were they with that kid? And then they make that determination if it was a low-level outbreak or, you know, a high risk. These kids also need to quarantine. So we've added with our junior high volleyball right now, their first match is tomorrow. We have 62 teams since June 1st that have returned to play. I think the latest we have is that we quarantined 18 of those kids, or excuse me, 18 of those teams. And lately, those numbers have dropped a bit because we have more tracers to go in and look at the level of exposure. And so instead of, you know, quarantining an entire 120 kids on a football team, for example, it might just be, you know, four kids or 16 kids. Or, you know, if they're all skilled players or offensive line or defensive line and whatnot. So that forum has really helped the health department get to what they need to know right away. And then that information goes to Mr. Zigich. And then we can contact those specific kids and let the parents make that determination. We've, one of the questions was the risk of extracurricular activities. The risk is a little higher because they're not in a classroom setting where they're masked all the time. And the governor's latest announcement, I think it was section three, letter H, talked about the exemption for PE classes and extracurricular activities. And so we're not wearing masks most of the time when there's contact or competition. That mask requirement is not in effect at that time. But we told our coaches, if you're gathering around for instruction where the kids aren't moving, if you're giving them, you know, specifics, instructions, those sorts of things, let's put masks on. That'll help mitigate that risk as much as possible. When a kid's out there, you know, doing line drills or something like that, obviously their mask will be off. So it's, you know, our high level in high school and junior high, we have high, medium and low-level risk sports. So your contact sports like boys lacrosse, football, swimming relays are high risk. They need to be a little more stringent in what they do. Basketball, volleyball, soccer would be like a medium risk. Girls lacrosse, there's less contact, so that's a medium risk sport. And then things that are individualized like golf, your field events, javelin, shot put, those are low level. So you're going to have more outbreaks in our high level. Cheer and drill are high-risk activities because of the level of contact. So we'll keep, you know, revisiting that as we see what's going on and adjust it from there. Like Rick talked about, 50% outdoor, 25% indoor. And hopefully, we can, you know, we'll adjust as we get more data and input as, you know, our task force continues to meet. But certainly, there's a difference between clarity and certainty. I feel that we have great clarity with what we want our coaches and administrators to do out in schools. I think they do a heck of a job working with kids. The thing that does scare us, keeps us up at night, is the level of certainty. We're not quite sure how it's going to work out, but we do have a plan in place. We've got great direction from, you know, that task force meeting and working with the health department closely with them. Meeting with our high school secondary directors and, you know, like we're in it together and we'll get through this. Any questions?
Ms. Phipps?
So I guess I would like to know, why is there a difference? So we said at the beginning of the meeting that if we had three L in a classroom, the classroom would be quarantined. But it sounds like that's different for the sport. Can you just speak to that?
Sure. Like Mr. Zerbakan spoke of, you know, the 15, 15-minute exposure, six feet distance with a mask is different than, you know, athletics because most of those kids are close contact. They're, you know, for the most part, they're not wearing masks. And, you know, there's a lot more interaction than they would in the classroom. So the droplets and things of that nature are, they're not filtered through anything with, you know, since we're not wearing masks. So I think that's why at this point in time, especially in June, we've learned a lot since then. And then I believe they've hired 40-some-odd contact tracers. Is that right for the health? Oh, 140. I underestimated. So we've got great contact tracers now. So they can get, you know, they send one to Legacy Junior High, for example. If a kid tests positive and then see who is interacting with them. And I think before it was just overwhelming. It was new. And if a kid had an outbreak, you know, or a positive test, then we, the health department didn't want an outbreak. So they just quarantine, you know, Farmington's basketball team.
So if, if, if there is a, say I'm on a football team and we did have three or four kids that would have contracted it, are the other team people told or their parents informed that their, that their child might have been exposed? I mean, is that information out or is that something that we don't, don't share with the other people that might be in contact?
Great question. I think the health department, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Zerbakan, is that they, once they go in and look at who was around the kid, how much, the level of exposure, then they will make that determination. And they do contact the parents and say, look, Tim Best tested positive. It's our understanding through our, you know, our information that your son, your daughter, whatever, was around this individual. We determine it's a low-level risk. And so it's up to you if you want to quarantine your child or send them back. There's no need from the health department, is what I've seen. Conversely, they may say, we've determined the level of risk is high and you need to quarantine your child as well.
It's one of the reasons though, you see, Ms. Phipps, the canceling of games. When they're, to prevent even the issue of having to cross-school trace and so forth. If someone's tested positive on one team, they have started canceling games and will continue to do so.
Mr. Ryan?
I just wanted to say thank you. My microphone's off. I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you and Mr. Astle have done on this. Because as we've been talking about, the social emotional learning piece and good mental health, I think this is a huge part of good mental health for these students when they've experienced what they have, you know, last spring and now. Not going back five days a week, but an alternating hybrid schedule. This is a really important piece for them. So I hope that all the work that you've done is successful and that we can keep having the sporting events and whatnot, that everyone follows the rules. Because it's a huge part of their good mental health to be able to participate in this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Could you just speak a little bit to the, you mentioned PE briefly and when you were kind of talking through some different scenarios. Since that impacts even more kids than our tryout sports do, what are kind of the recommendations you're giving to PE teachers?
Sure. Thank you for that question. Well, one thing that's helped is, you know, the hybrid learning module with, you know, cutting those classes in half. Because it's, it's going to be difficult with PE. Some of our junior high classes are 120 kids and now they're 60. So we're encouraging them to go outside as much as possible. And that, you know, the data and research shows that that's the best way to physically distance. You know, you've got recirculated air and whatnot outside. Hopefully, there's no inversion. But we can space kids, you know, we've got great facilities in our, in our schools to space kids as much as possible. The other thing I'm telling schools is to switch from team-based activities to skill-based activities. So they're doing more individualized, you know, lifetime activities where they can distance, do things on their own. If they are doing practice activities like bouncing a basketball, passing a basketball, for example, instead of passing it to and from a partner, you just find a wall, bounce pass it, chest pass, overhand, whatnot, to the wall. And that way, it's just, you know, the equipment, if the only person touching that is going to be yourself. And then we have a disinfectant spray that, you know, we'll spray between classes. Or at the end of the day, we're still kind of figuring out which one we're going to do, which will, you know, kill the virus. So that's kind of the basic of what we're doing at PE. So that's kind of the, the, the basic of what we're doing at PE is, uh, to, to go to more individualized things and trying to adopt that mentality. If they're gonna do group activities, then, um, do them outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Phipps?
Can I ask one more question, but not necessarily of Mr. Best, but, um, how, are we applying this to other activities that are not athletic, like concerts and plays and things like that?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. Um, it'll be the, the same protocol, um, in terms of what the limitations will be, and, you know, that filters down into the elementary, um, levels, we're still, uh, you know, we've got a lot of bridges to cross as we come to them, um, but that, uh, is, you know, we've got the structure in place. Also, uh, does that answer your question, Ms. Phipps? Let me, let me apologize to, uh, Dr. Best, um, Board, uh, Mr. Best was recently earned his, uh, PhD, we're very proud of him, and I apologize for not addressing him appropriately.
Don't worry, I'm still getting used to it.
Well, it's certainly a, an incredible achievement, and we're just grateful he's on our staff.
Well, thank you, Dr. Best, Mr. Astle, we appreciate that, um, and I think, uh, what Mr. Astle said about the, I think the meeting was today, Mr. Astle, the meeting with the principals, sharing ideas, goes back to so much of what has been said tonight. We had a game, what we learned, moving forward, so, great coordination, great teamwork, thank you. We appreciate all of you being with us, being patient, it's been a great evening of information coming to us, and, um, Board, we now need to, uh, go to closed session for the purpose of property issues, so if, uh, we could get a motion to that effect, please?
I move that we adjourn, uh, and go into a closed meeting for the purpose of property issues.
I'll second that.
So the motion by Mr. Eckersley, seconded by Ms. Gerard, is to go to closed session for the purpose of property issues. Mr. Eckersley, roll call vote?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
I'm, yes, Ms. Mumford?
Yes.
Ms. Gerard?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Ms. Phipps?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
There's a lot of content.
It's like, come on!
So, the one thing I'm gonna add-